Let's go ahead and call the meeting in order, please. This is the City Council Meeting, September the 5th, 2019. If you would, please stand and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance and remain standing for the invocation.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic, which stands: One nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Bishop Garing, would you give our invocation tonight?
Mr. Mayor Council, let us pray. Lord Jesus, we thank you for being our Savior. We thank you for being our Redeemer, and we thank you for being our Keeper. And, Lord, we thank you for the City Council, and we thank you for the citizens of Canton and the citizens of Cherokee County, Georgia. We celebrate today, Lord, a great Chief that will be departing, who has done a great work here in the City of Canton. We pray for his safety, we pray for his success, and, Lord, we pray for our new Chief and all of our first responders. We could do nothing without you. Teach us to continue to put our trust in you. Bless the City of Canton, bless Cherokee County, in Jesus' name. Amen.
Thank you. Okay, you have your agenda. We'll have a consideration to approve the agenda as presented. I will make note of one item, Item 6A, recognizing and presenting a proclamation to the nine-and-under Canton Stingers Little League Baseball Team. They will be here at our next meeting to receive that proclamation, so we will not be doing 6A. Is there any other additions or changes to be made to it?
Motion to accept.
Okay. Mr. Young made the motion, Mr. Goodman seconded the motion to accept the agenda as presented with the exception of the 6A. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. All members voting for the motion. Okay, tonight we have a public hearing. Now, one thing I want to make sure, did anyone sign up to speak at the public hearing as opposed to the 10-minute public input period? The 10-minute public input period is a separate item, okay? This is a public hearing for the Planning Commission recommendation for Case MP 1907-002, Chris McCurry, requesting a master plan to allow multiple family in Pod E, Riverstone, and also Case CUP 1907-002, Chris McCurry requesting conditional use permit approval for multifamily residential located at 137 and 139 Riverstone Parkway. Mr. Attorney, we can hold those at the same time, the public hearing.
Yes.
Okay. So, I believe, Bethany?
Mayor, City Council, what you have in front of you is the master plan amendment and the conditional use permit for 137 and 139 Riverstone Parkway. Planning Commission held a public hearing on August 19th, 2019, for both, and they recommended approval for the master plan amendment as well as the conditional permit. The applicant is seeking an amendment to the original master plan that will allow multifamily as an allowed use in Pod E. The applicant is requesting 120 units on 4.28 acres, which is a density of 28 dwelling units per acre. The applicant is seeking a conditional use permit that will allow construction of an age-restricted, 55-and-older apartment complex. The city now has the requirement for any proposed project containing multifamily buildings, three or more attached living units, to obtain a conditional use permit. And if you have any questions, staff is here to answer them.
Okay. Well, we will open the public hearing, and I assume that, will there be another presentation, or is this just... I know we'll have the... Those who will speak in favor of it, I assume, will be Mr. McCurry there to come on up, so we'll go ahead and call for those. And we have a total of 10 minutes, I believe, so you may have...
Save some.
Save some for rebuttal if you need to, if there's any opposition that speaks. Yes, sir?
Thank you. Good evening. My name is Chris McCurry, and I would like to first thank each of you, individual and as a group, for allowing me to present our application this evening. As an applicant, our family has been residents of Cherokee County since 1987 and have developed multiple properties within Canton City limits since 2003. After the development, we have maintained ownership and provided continuous property management of the property since development, and if approved, we will do the same with this project. The subject property is the remaining undeveloped portion of a larger previously-approved and substantially-completed development. As evidenced by the absence of completion, the recession, together with changing retail demands, have rendered this parcel economically undevelopable as previously-approved. Although not discussed in the initial work session, I believe on August the 6th, it was discussed in the Planning Commission meeting, and the applications provide detailed information intended to reflect the difference between the previously-approved existing site plan and the proposed development. The proposal before the council reflects less impervious area, less parking, and a smaller building footprint than is currently approved for this site. In addition, as the applicant has developed and owns a significant portion of the adjacent affected properties with a significant vested interest, it is assured that the proposed development would be a quality and enhancing project, which would be an asset to the community. This process commenced with a desire to complete our original development, which began in 2006, and would accomplish the following: utilization of existing but unused property, elimination of the existing undesirable status, and serve to enhance the surrounding and completed properties. This all began in late May. I reached out to Mark Crosby and asked what type of development that the city would favorably upon. He suggested that I go through Donna Bale and set up an appointment with the city manager, Mr. Peppers. We... I did, and we met on June the 4th and had a general discussion of what may be favorable as far as development, and the idea of age-restricted apartments came up, which generated a research commencement. Later, in that meeting, Mr. Peppers suggested that I get with Steve Green and find out the application process and the variance, which I did, and met with Steve Green. On June the 27th, I met with Board One council members, Sandy McGrew and Joellen Wilson, and had a general overall discussion of the concept. I believe at that time it was met favorably with both of them. Submitted the applications on July the 1st. August the 6th, attended a work session. August the 15th, submitted an addendum to information of information, which I believe each of you have in answering questions raised on August the 6th. August the 15th, that information was discussed in a public forum, with both requests passed. After the public session, I met with owners of adjacent residential community, the Villas at Riverstone, answered their questions, and again yesterday, I met with several members from that development, which is contiguous on the west side of this, met with them, and I don't know that any of them are here today, and, you know, we were told that there was no objections after yesterday's meeting. So, that's my presentation, and if you got any questions, be happy to answer them.
Okay. Is there anyone else who would like to speak in favor of this development? Is there anyone who would like to speak in opposition to this development? Okay, hearing none, then we will close the public hearing. Okay? And is there any questions from the council for Ms. McGrew?
What do the neighbors of the condos behind them think of this?
You're asking him.
I met with Carol Day. We met after... We met privately after the September 15th public hearing, in which it passed, answered several questions there, and we met with Ms. Day and five other individuals representing the homeownership of the Villas yesterday afternoon, and they said that there were... Carol Day said that there was no... Excuse me, that they had no opposition to the development.
So, you did work all that out, with the height of the buildings blocking their views and their light?
We explained and went in great detail of how moving the building forward away from their properties, as currently-approved, a building can be set 25 feet off the property line. What we're proposing is 49 feet off the property line and enhancing the screen between the two properties.
What about the drainage of your development onto the Villas?
The one... There were three issues: detention, traffic, and the sideline. The... They did not understand in the public session that the main point of ingress and egress from this development has already been and was previously installed, and it's to the north of the Moes Development. That's the primary point of ingress and egress. The secondary would be the signalized intersection via inner parcel transfer, and then the third point of egress, egress only, would be through the Commons at Riverstone, which is a three-building medical office complex.
And I'm just curious, what sort of amenities will this project have for residents?
What we're envisioning and what separates this project from a lot, and we've got a concept of several other properties, this is age-restricted but independent living. So, there's a serving bistro, there's salons, there's a wellness center, a fitness center, outdoor community areas, a library, a sunroom, community room, a family room, a kitchen, so if somebody's wanting to have their family up in gatherings, a minimum of 10,000, probably closer to 12,000 square feet, of amenities enclosed within the building.
And age-restricted. Will anyone be allowed to live there who is under 55, with a resident who is 55?
Well, we still have not got to that point. You... There's a lot of different ways to do this. The most... There's some that are very restrictive, no one under 55, or you can set that at 60. I think we said 55 in our application, and then the secondary person may be limited to 45. What you don't want to do for the other tenants is to not put a restriction on the second person, and then younger people are coming in.
So, that would allow for spouses, or...
Absolutely. Yes, so...
Significant other.
So, right. So, if you married somebody, you know, 45, just a year younger than you, then they could live there, right?
Thank you.
Yeah.
It won't work, though.
No. I thought I'd try. I thought I'd try.
Anyone else? Ms. Wilson?
Mr. McCurry, do you, at this point, have any idea of the rent, the range for the rent of these apartments?
We're looking at, I believe, $850 to $1,250 a month.
Okay.
Say that again, please.
I'm sorry?
Say the price again, please.
$850 to $1,250 is our target rent.
Thank you.
And it's also my understanding that you're planning on one bedroom and two bedrooms?
One bedroom, one bath, two bedroom, one bath, two bedroom, two bath, no three bedrooms.
And no... Right. Okay. One and two bedrooms only.
And I would like to back up. One of the six people representing the Villas asked to be put on the waiting list yesterday.
Mr. Testes?
Just a clarification. I'm not a developer, so pardon my ignorance on this question, but I noticed in the application it stated that there was 1.11 spaces per unit?
Yes.
Is that... What's the standard? It seems low.
The... This was discussed and was one of the issues raised by the earlier commission. The standard in age-restricted is .80 spaces per thousand, and that's actually what Steve Green had relayed to me earlier. We changed that through some modifications in conceptual design, and I believe Steve Green put it, the 120 units is a maximum, and the parking would be 1.20 spaces per thousand.
Mr. Pat, I want to ask you a question. Without doing this, how many units could they put in there? Any, without this approval? I mean, could they do the 15 units per acre?
The property is on planned development mixed use.
Oh, okay.
That's the reason for the master plan amendment, so that Pod E would allow for multiple family to be developed, and then the conditional use permit approval is where Mr. McCurry is requesting approval for the 120 units, which on the acreage works out at 28 units to the acre.
Do we have a zoning designation that would allow 28 units per acre?
Basically, the only thing would be part of a master plan and planned development in which the applicant proposes a certain density. We do not have a zoning district designation for apartments that allows that type of a density.
So, we have RM 15, which is 15 units per acre, has a separate zoning, but is that the max, or we have one...
Central Business District, as well as planned development, would require a master plan. There aren't any densities specified, and the applicant would propose those densities for City Council consideration as a part of that zoning master plan approval process under...
So, the only limit, then, is what the council would approve?
Correct.
Okay. Okay. Anyone else have a question? Okay. I guess that's all we have this time. This will be on the agenda in two weeks, on the 19th, for potential action at that time.
Okay. Thank you, sir.
Yes, sir. Thank you.
For your time.
Okay, we... Under Guest Investors, we have one item that's not on there I do want to bring up. We have incoming Chief Mayor Phil, I believe, has something that he wanted to present here. As everyone knows, we are... Our chief is leaving, unfortunately, for us. He's done a wonderful job, but he's moving up to a much bigger job with the state.
The... One of the traditions in law enforcement is when an officer retires, and especially someone that has had the impact on the department that Chief Mitchell has had, is that their service weapon is presented to them. So, with that in mind, I'd like to present this weapon to Chief Mark Mitchell.
So, we had just a fantastic reception earlier today for Chief Mitchell, and we're very excited about what his career's going to do as he transitioned to the Department of Juvenile Justice. And we made a couple of presentations to him there, but we have a special presentation. So, for those of you who know, the city, over the last couple of years, has been doing rebranding and things like that, and one of the things we wanted to do in our office buildings was, you know, add a little bit of character to them, a little bit of scenery to them. Well, we have this wonderful picture, and we had asked that Chief Mitchell and his daughter help us out with a photo op where she was fishing in a reservoir, and we thought it would be appropriate as a good takeaway item for him. He can hang it up in his new office. I believe Captain Tucker's got a copy of that for you that we would like to present to you. And I will put him on the spot for just a minute and see if he would like to make...
I'll keep it brief. I'm kind of spent from earlier, but thank you so much again for the awesome opportunity that I had and the privilege. Just humbled to have been the chief of police here at the City of Canton. I have memories, friends, colleagues, that I'll... Just relationships and experiences and knowledge that I'll be able to take from this six-year experience. Again, as I've said many, many times, out of my 27 years in law enforcement, this is most... This six has been the most rewarding for me, and I'd say my family would say the same. So, and, man, the weapon's awesome. I'll definitely practice for that. And the picture, it was that they let... Mr. Peppers let me hang it in the corner of my office. So, sometimes when I was on a bad day, I'd swing around and look at it and say, "This is what it really means. This is what it's about." So, my little girl's got me wrapped around her finger, and she knows it, so I like embarrassing her, too. But anyway, thank you again so much.
Ms. Belinda Hardy has, I believe, something to bring forth. We'll eventually get back on this agenda here in a minute, but...
Good evening, everyone. I just wanted to let you know about a few things that we've got going on downtown. We've got another really good weekend coming up because it's our first Friday. Journey... Excuse me. Departure of the Journey Tribute Band will be our headline entertainment. We'll have 22 food and beverage vendors, along with activities for the kids, so make sure you bring your blanket and your chair, and come out early because it promises to be a big crowd. Want to make sure that you have plenty of time to get a seat because you're going to enjoy the evening with a few thousand of your closest friends, because we anticipate a huge crowd. The following morning, we'll be back with a farmer's market. We have 51 vendors that will be participating this week, and I look at us as being extremely lucky, because we are getting to the end of our market, and we're still over 50 vendors each week with a lot of variety. So, make sure you come out and support them. We've got some great things going on at the theater. Main Street is sponsoring a fall Disney... Excuse me, a fall break Disney... Start over. A fall break Disney movie marathon. That is going to be September the 23rd through the 26th, and the showtimes are 10 and 2 p.m. I, along with the city manager, attended the Georgia Downtown Association Conference in Jekyll last week, and I announced last month's meeting that the Jones-McIntyre Building won the Best Facade Award, and the city manager and I accepted that award on behalf of the City of Canton. So, it's beautiful. We anticipate and are looking forward to bringing home more of those next year when we attend the conference. Our next Main Street mixer will be Wednesday, September the 18th, beginning at 5:30. Our host for this mixer will be the Cherokee Arts Center, and you are all invited to attend, if you wouldn't mind. Save the date. October 4th will be our last first Friday, and that will be with rumors, the Fleetwood Mac Tribute Band, and that's also Jeep Night, so you will be enjoying that with another few thousand of your closest friends. Have y'all got anything for me? Anything at all?
Anyone?
We learned a lot of great things at conference. We're looking forward to putting those into place here and continuing moving us forward.
Great. Thank you.
Great. Thank you.
Okay. All right. Now, back on the agenda, Item 6B, I believe. We have a couple of proclamations here, and one is American Legion Day, and I would like to ask those here with the American Legion, if you would stand, and I'll read this proclamation, then we'll come down and make the presentation. All right. Whereas the American Legion was formed in 1919, shortly after the termination of World War I hostilities, and whereas the American Legion is an organization of wartime veterans united by a common bond of continued service to God and country, and whereas the centennial celebration of the American Legion observance started in August 28 with the 100th National Convention and will culminate Veterans Day 2019, and whereas the U.S. Congress chartered the American Legion on September the 16th, 1919, with four pillars of service: veterans, children, national security, and Americanism. And whereas by giving meaningful service in conjunction with the theme "Still Serving America," legionnaires have made significant contributions to American thought and deed. And whereas endeavors of the American Legion, which strengthen our freedom and perpetuate our free institutions, characterize this gigantic fraternity of service as one of the great bulwarks of the American way of life. Whereas the American Legion has achieved its position of high esteem through programs of service to community, state, and nation. And whereas an American Legion post was chartered in Canton, Georgia, in 1919, and was named for the first Cherokee Countyman who died in World War I, Thomas M. Brady Jr. of Canton. And whereas this post, Thomas M. Brady, American Legion Post 45 of Canton, Georgia, has served the veterans and children, strived for a long, a strong national defense, and promoted Americanism for over 100 years in Canton, Georgia. Now, therefore be it resolved, I, Gene Hopgood, Mayor of the City of Canton, to hereby proclaim September the 16th as American Legion. to hereby proclaim September the 16th as American Legion Day, and do call upon all citizens, companies, and organizations to join with me in commending the good works of this organization as an expression of appreciation for the wartime and peacetime services of our legionnaires. They are truly still serving America. In witness, therefore, I herein to set my hand and cause to be affixed the official seal of the City of Canton this fifth day of September 2019. Okay. The next one that we have is the, is anyone here, they had requested that we have a proclamation for the National Surgical Technologist Week, but I understand the person who has received it had to have surgery, so I.
Oh, no, really?
Oh, she's in, I'm sorry, I'm sorry. She had to go do some surgery or be involved with it, anyway. But anyway, this is, I'll read this quickly here. Whereas for over 60 years, surgical technology has grown to meet the ever-increasing demand for the well-educated, highly skilled, and versatile surgical technologist. And whereas surgical technologists are entrusted with the lives and well-being of patients and provide a critical service during surgical procedures. Whereas surgical technologists are responsible for the application of sterile and aseptic technique, an aseptic technique in the operating room, ensuring that equipment functions properly and facilitating safe and effective conduct during invasive surgical procedures. And whereas certified surgical technologists graduate from an accredited program and receive certification conferred by the National Board of Surgical Technology and surgical assisting based upon passage of the national examination. And whereas a surgical technologist's motto, aero primo, the patient first, refers, reflects total commitment to patient safety and advocacy. The people of Georgia are honored to join with our nation in recognizing National Surgical Technology Week. Now therefore, I, Gene Hopgood, Mayor of the City of Canton, do hereby proclaim September the 15th through the 21st, 2019, as Surgical Technologists Week, and urge all my fellow citizens to join me in acknowledging the important role of surgical technologists in the care and recovery of their patients. Obviously, we, some folks, we really have to depend on when you're having surgery, no doubt about that. So the next, the next item we have here is the franchise audit presentation. Nathan, you have someone from GMA to make a proposal.
Yes, Mayor and Council, I have Mr. Ryan Fender here. He's with GMA. He's going to discuss, just take a few minutes of your time to discuss the pending franchise audit if y'all.
Okay.
Good evening, thanks for having me.
Good evening.
My name is Ryan Fender. I'm here on behalf of the Georgia Municipal Association. I won't take too much of your time, or I just really wanted to talk about the possibility of GMA assisting the city with the audit of Comcast. Just a little background, GMA has a telecom and right-of-way management program that about 172 local governments participate in. One of the services that we provide are technical audits of not just cable companies, but telecom. We do basically anybody in your right-of-way, traditional utilities or whatnot. But in regards to Comcast, we have a gentleman that does all of our technical audits. His name is Mr. Tim McGraw. He's been working with us for the last five years and has been doing the technical audits on behalf of GMA, basically in an audit of Comcast. And, you know, I spoke with Tim, and I just wanted to provide you some information based off some recent audits we've done on some cities close by, such as Woodstock, who is a member of the TRM program. But basically, when we do an audit, we break it down into two phases. We do a financial side, and basically, we make sure that the quarterly franchise fees that the city receives is, you know, accurate based on your franchise agreement with Comcast. And the second part, which I think you will find beneficial, is what we call jurisdictional coding. And basically, what we do with that is we break down the city's addresses and compare it to Comcast's billing, their billing addresses. For example, if you have a neighborhood that is in the city of Holly Springs, but it's, they're remitting franchise fees to Holly Springs, but it should be being remitted at Canton, that's a part of an audit, which we tend to find pretty big financial findings when we do these type of jurisdictional coatings. From my understanding, there, we have determined based on some recent jurisdictional coatings that there are some streets and communities in south, the southwest side of town that are not properly being coded to the city of Canton. It could be the city of Holly Springs, it could be county. We just don't know without doing the actual audit. But based on, I guess, two jurisdictional coatings we've done recently, with the information we do have, we have determined it would make sense for the city to move forward with an audit.
Anyone have any question about that, Ms. Estes?
What's the cost?
Well, I know there's two proposals. One is a one-time cost of $7,000. It can be arranged to have the, you know, half the work done, or the payment upfront, half of it upfront, and then the second part of the payment done when the work is complete. Or, I believe, GMA also proposed that the city actually join the telecom and right-of-way program, which is an annual retainer of $10,000 a year, which is the max, and it's based on the population. It's 56 cents per capita, and it tops out at $10,000. So for example, the city of Savannah and some of our larger cities are consolidated governments, they're all capped at $10,000 a year, which the city of Canton. But it would also include all the other services, including additional audits of all your cable providers with jurisdictional coatings, as well as, you know, like I said, we, I don't have time to talk about all the other projects, but, or services that GMA provides, but it would include that as well. So I would recommend going, joining the program versus a one-time audit, but it's, I think you'll get more out of the program and definitely receive your money back for both, for each one.
How long does it take typically to do a Comcast audit?
We require the, whoever it is, at least 30 days to provide us the financial information. And it usually takes depending, so we have one gentleman who does all the audits. And, you know, we have an audit of going of somebody at all times. So based on how many audits we have in place, no more than 60 days.
Okay, anyone else have a question? Now, you require 3,500 upfront, right?
Yeah, whatever works for the city.
Oh, okay. Probably nothing, no, I'm just kidding.
Mr. Ingram and I were talking about this a little earlier. If you'll recall, I think it was two years ago, we did an alcohol audit with GMA. We've done hotel tax audit with them in the past as well. And I think just about all the auditing services we've had with them have been that 50-50 split, 50 upfront, 50 at the conclusion.
Have all the ones that we've done in the past always netted more than it cost?
Yeah, the alcohol one was kind of close, but I think what it did better than anything, it looked at our existing fee ordinance for alcohol, made some improvements in that, and provided education to each of those that were paying in those funds to make sure that they were reporting things properly and how the process worked, so.
Well, it certainly, certainly could bring things together if we've got, if there are issues about service areas and stuff like that, and who's supposed to be getting the franchise fees and so forth. I think that probably be worth, that'd be a pretty small price to pay to get that straightened out, at least for a period of time.
Well, and certainly, as much growth as the city's had over the last, you know, 15 years and changes in, in the market, it's probably a good thing to look at at least once.
Yeah, we typically recommend an audit every three years of your cable provider, no matter who it is. And, and again, you know, if the city has experienced a lot of growth, you know, from my understanding, the city's population has more than doubled in the last 20 years. You know, there's a lot of annexations that if a city has not notified, and it could be your EMC, your telecom, your telephone provider, your cable provider, there's, the jurisdictional coding would be more beneficial than a financial piece. I believe Tim already predicted if, since the city of Canton is in the same billing system as Woodstock, he's already calculated or predicted that if, you know, without doing the audit, that the city would probably recover an underpayment of $7,000. But that's not the jurisdictional coding. In Woodstock, we recovered $185,000 based on the jurisdictional coding alone. So, and he's already determined that there's already city streets that are not being coded properly based on that jurisdictional coding he did with Woodstock and Holly Springs as well. So the financial piece, it'll probably become out as a wash, but we really want to focus on the jurisdictional coding.
Makes sense. Any other questions, comments? Okay, well, we will most likely be acting on this, making a decision in two weeks on the 19th.
Well, in the meantime, I can probably provide some additional information that, about GMA's other services that you might find, and, you know, when we have the time. But thank you for having me, appreciate it.
Thank you, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay. Item E, request to review gun article storage policy approved on September the 25th. Mr. Weaver.
Mr. Mayor, members of council, if you should so find it in your favor, I respectfully request review of the article storage policy that was adopted roughly this time last year. I recall that policy was created by council at my behest in an effort to codify under policy, council-approved policy, the statutory provisions of Georgia law in this regard. Also, I do think that it is appropriate to point out that over the longer days of summer, I, as many of you and others were present, and everyone went over the city budget, and the city administration was gracious enough to find available slotted small equipment line item funds that was potentially available for this small project. This will be a one-time purchase that council would have to make once the budget comes online on October 1st. During that time, I worked in cooperation with all key vested stakeholders, including but not limited to the city's administration, the municipal court judge, the police department, and others to secure a general consensus on this measure. I'm seeking only for the inclusion of the words "or municipal court" and public safety complex each time that it appears after the call. And during a discussion that I had with Mr. Peppers, Mr. Peppers had alluded to the fact that he wanted to be sure that any tentative purchase would be the cubicle lockers so as to make room for the purses and whatnot, as opposed to the slotted lockers that would not be able to accommodate purses for that building. Also, in a parallel effort to this, the municipal court judge, along with our police department, is reviewing the courthouse safety and security protocol. But the safety and security protocol is something that is beyond my reach as it is exempt from open records disclosure and other things. So I'm not, I have no vested stake in the protocol, only the policy. So if it should meet with your favor, I do ask for tentative approval of the policy for presentation to the city manager. And even though it could be argued, based on the conversations that you're, that each of you had much earlier in the year, that it could be done in policy and not in ordinance. Out of a respectful discourse for government business, I would ask that the measure be weighted to be acted on as an action item during the next, during the full council meeting, as opposed to the work session, in order to meet that two-reading requirement that was very important in the general broad-brush consensus that each of you had agreed to this past July during the winter. However, if it should be approved as to form and style based on the city attorney's professional legal recommendation and the city administration's consent, I do ask for your tentative, potential favorable approval of that for presentment for a finalization in due passage. Thank you.
Does anyone have any questions, or, yeah, Ms. Estes?
What's the, you're very diligent, and I appreciate that because we've, I know, I think Ms. Wilson asked for it to be in the budget before specifically. We've got a policy, and, and we've got the funds. So I'm just curious, what's the, what's the ask? What would we be actually taking action on?
So the issue is, the policy that we have right now says that we provide a gun locker here at City Hall.
Okay.
And if we're going to provide one at Public Safety Municipal Court, Mr. Weaver would like for us to add that language into that policy.
Got it, okay.
And as I alluded to Mr. Weaver yesterday, I want to hold off on adding the language until we decide exactly the location in that building where they're going to be placed, so it's clear in there, exactly where those lockers are located. The issue, just so council is aware, is that right now, if you're going into municipal court, you go through the front doors of the old sanctuary into the courtroom. And there's stairs, and there's a metal detector. And so we've been working from a staff level to identify if we can find a locker system that we can put in there that will not knock us out of ADA compliance. And so if we cannot, then we may have to locate those in the lobby of the municipal court portion of that building. And we just want to clarify as part of that policy exactly where it's located.
Anyone else?
Thank you, Mr. Estes, for the question, and thank you, Mr. Peppers, for the clarification of those remarks. It's just, again, it's a formality for the inclusion of that language so as to provide consistency, not only in practice, but policy based on council's decisions from earlier.
Okay, anyone else have a question? Thank you, Mr. Weaver, appreciate it. Okay, item F, for road abandonment proposal, Gary Cavaness. Or should I say Benson Chambers?
Thank you, Mayor and Council. I am here on behalf of Mr. Cavaness, Mr. Wetherby, as well as Mr. Escobar with regards to the abandonment of a city alley. I have prepared a couple of maps here for you that may help you understand better about where this is and logistically where it's located. Thank you, sir. The purpose of these alleys, you may ask, and I have an answer. From my father, who I would never dispute. My great-grandparents lived on Scott Mill Road across from Sunnyside Cemetery, where they are actually buried. They were a little better off than some. They had a horse and a wagon. And my grand, my great-grandfather made a living by using that horse and that wagon to haul coal for Jones-McIntyre at 10 cents a load. You delivered coal to the rear of the home. And these alleys were utilized for the purpose of delivering that coal to these homes. These alleys exist in a number of different areas in City of Canton, including Sunnyside area, also along East Main Street. I know personally that I was involved in abandoning one of those off Crystal Street, I believe, when I was representing the city, that run parallel with East Main Street. And more recently, there was one abandoned off of the north side of East Main Street that was behind Herman Cantrell's house and ran up behind several of those. You'll see on this map, and I've marked it in yellow for you, Mr. Cavaness is on Scott Mill. Above him to the north is Mr. Wetherby, and above him to the north is Mr. Escobar. him to the north is Mr. Wetherby, and above him to the north is Mr. Escobar. The portion of the alley that's on the east side of their properties is bounded by the cemetery. The cemetery owns, uh, cemetery belongs to the City of Canton. And between the actual cemetery area and the alley area is actually another road, according to some of the old surveys, apparently that was never developed, and not sure where it went, except maybe to help with the cemetery or to the cemetery. A large portion of this part of the alley on the north side, if you'll look on the aerial photo, once it leaves Mr. Escobar's property, uh, it has basically fallen off. Uh, Daniel's Body Shop is on the north side along Highway one forty. And if you've driven by there, I think you'll see that that's not just a hill, it's a cliff, uh, probably forty feet high, maybe, I'm guessing, but I don't know for sure. Uh, they would ask that, uh, it would certainly be beneficial to these property owners, uh, to utilize this extra area of the alleyway. We believe it's twenty feet wide, that's what seems most of them were. Uh, that can be confirmed, I propose, I suppose, by plats and surveys. A title exam may help with that as well. Uh, it appears, I, I don't know that my great, great-grandfather was the last person to ever use those alleys, but you can tell from the vegetation and the trees and that sort of thing that it's been many years, I would say at least more than twenty, maybe forty, uh, since those alleys, especially beyond, uh, Mr. Cavaness's property, have been utilized in any manner. Uh, it doesn't appear that it would be of any purpose for the cemetery. Uh, the cemetery is pretty well, you know, located, uh, where it is and its boundaries as well. So, basically on behalf of Mr. Cavaness, Mr. Wetherby, Mr. Escobar, uh, we would ask that you would consider initiating an abandonment process for those alleys, uh, so that they can be utilized and joined with Mr. Cavaness, Mr. Wetherby, Mr. Escobar, and in fact, anybody else beyond them, uh, that would be on the alleyway as well. Thank you.
Uh, let me ask a question. We're looking at this, um, uh, I guess the hand, uh, Escobar, you was talking about the cliff there, is that down to the Body Shop? Is that, is that what that is, Daniel's?
Yes, sir. You'll, you'll see all those cars stacked up, lined up there together on the aerial photo?
It, it, it would appear then that part of that would join Daniel's property.
Yes.
Is that correct?
I presume so. Uh, it may be that he's already utilizing part of that.
Yeah, I, I, it's hard to tell.
Can't tell. And I believe, well, it looks like it's all of his. Uh, the, the building top you see there at the very top would be Mr. Bill Johnson's property.
Oh, yeah. Yeah. So, would the request be that it be abandoned to each adjoining property owner? In other words, part of that would be ten foot on one side and ten foot to the other?
That, that's what the law would require. Uh, whether or not the city would consider at that point, uh, the portion of it that's on the cemetery side.
Right, cemetery side.
Uh, whether the city would consider at that point doing a, a bid, you know, for that to get rid of surplus property, uh, that's something you can decide.
Right, right. Okay.
If you do decide to do this, I'll be available to Mr. Dyer and help him in any way I can.
Okay. Anyone have, anyone else having a question about this? Okay. Thank you, sir.
Thank you, sir.
Appreciate it. The next item, Academy and Main Phase Two Presentation, Robert Good.
Good evening. Robert Good with the Good Group on behalf of the Harris Academy and Main Project. I'm just going to move a few of the boards over here, and I have some handouts that I can present as well.
Okay.
Okay, thank you. So, this is a continuing discussion from our last session in the workshop, and we've also subsequently followed up with the council members since then, and just wanted to report our latest progress on where we're at as we're evaluating the parking deck and looking at the parking deck, um, that we have, which we'll go into more discussion on that on the next slide. And we want to present some preliminary details about our parking deck. I don't, I don't know if I can go to the next slide there. So, we're, we're, oh, back one. Thank you. So, we're going to go through the preliminary details of where we're at on the update, uh, to give you an overall update, and I'll have some handouts as well. Uh, essentially, the parking deck is five levels. It's six hundred and forty-two spaces, which would accommodate both the city and the additional, uh, residential that we'd be looking at for the multifamily that would wrap the deck. And we have up to a hundred and thirty-six spaces per level. So, I have some, uh, handouts here. Sorry, we got in here a little bit late to get it into the electronic. So, as Mr. Peppers is passing those out, if you would look on page four, just before the last page there of the five sheets, and we'll, we'll show you the relationships of the par, of the parking decks, which we've labeled Parking Deck A, which is in between City Hall and the mill and part of the Academy and Main Project that we're working on, and to have the city consider that, uh, deck there, and versus B, that we have the current deck based on the information that we've seen so far by the city's consultant on that parking deck. And, and Parking Deck A, as we discussed, that's a total of six hundred and forty-two parking spaces. On that, on that, uh, next sheet, it will show the different levels that we have. If you go to the last sheet there, the package, it, it gives a floor-by-floor review of the five levels. And just to kind of walk through, our, our Level One right now is one thirty-four parking spaces, and then Level Two and Level Three, which are highlighted in red, are a hundred and thirty-six spaces each, which could be dedicated to the city as we work through some kind of arrangement for a private-public understanding with more details to follow. Collectively, that would be two hundred and seventy-two spaces for the city. This would also allow a collective overall spaces for the city. If you add the eighty-three spaces that are already here on the surface space, you would have a total of three hundred and fifty-five spaces altogether. Plus, you would have the lot that you can look to do something in the future on that lot that you're proposing, that, that, or looking at the deck there. So, collectively, there'd be three hundred and fifty-five spaces with two seventy-two in this deck and the eighty-three on the surface. So, three hundred and fifty-five versus, uh, if you looked at Parking Deck B, which is where you're looking at the current deck, that is essentially, uh, a total of three hundred and five spaces, and it ends up really being a net of just around two hundred and twenty because it replaces eighty-three spaces. So, when we look at the two projects, I thought it just might be worthwhile, uh, to compare, you know, one versus the other, as we're going to go through the process to help the city make the best decision on where they might want to consider which deck to, to, uh, continue with. And I think it's really good for an apples-apples comparison as we go through. And we're just kind of given a progress of just dimensionally where we are. We're the same number of levels, it's just we have two levels that basically supply what the, more than the net of what you get with the current parking deck that you're, that you're looking at, which is Parking Deck B, uh, plus the eighty-three spaces you'd be able to still continue to enjoy use of. We, we think there's a lot of other favorable factors along the way, is with Parking Deck A, you could still remain and retain the eighty-three spaces and enjoy that use while this parking deck is being built, uh, across on the other side of City Hall, so it doesn't get in the way of your current day-to-day needs already. And so, that's, that's one thing we wanted to point out, as well as, you know, as you go through this process, you still retain that land for, in addition to the, the enjoyment of the eighty-three spaces that you have today, of what you might do in the future with that property. Uh, our deck, obviously, uh, we have a little bit of larger land area to fit it, and so we can get up to about a hundred and thirty-six spaces per level, while Parking Deck B, uh, is, you know, limited to about, on average, sixty spaces, uh, per level. There's some spaces that are seventy-seven, there's one space, uh, one level that's like twenty or so. So, it averages out to about sixty spaces. So, rather than going up and down, you know, multiple levels to try to find a parking spot, you know, the city could only need to have two levels to go up and down to, to look for a parking spot. So, it's less levels, less, less driving up and down to find, but similar parking. So, I just wanted to point that out in terms of, as we talk, continue to talk about Deck A and Deck B. We, we also, uh, elevationally, uh, with Deck B, and I know that the consultant is still working through the options with the city and is going to work out how they're going to screen Deck B, but Deck B i- is going to need to, you know, kind of figure out where the screening is. And the purp, purpose of this, uh, is to try to start putting some massing to it and where the relationships are in, in and around the grid to the city, uh, which we'll get into on some pedestrian plans. Uh, but in regards to, to Deck B, you know, it, it has, uh, some challenges to it versus Deck A as, as it relates to, uh, how to screen it. Our Deck A, which would be looking at the city investing in that Deck A, uh, as they would consider investing in Deck B, we're looking to screen Deck A with a, a part, a multifamily residential. Uh, in that, in that case, as I've said before, Parking Deck A would be invisible. And, and so that you wouldn't, you know, right now, on, on this exhibit, I've just kind of shown what they both look like without any covering at all. Uh, the other thing on Parking Deck A, which we're exploring, right now, we show in the documents that you have, that coming off of Academy Street onto Hill Street Circle and into the deck is coming into Level Three at this point. And then Level Two is the level below. So, two and three would be the two levels that the city would utilize. And of course, we'd work a way to, you know, separate the, and isolate the uses of what would be the city parking versus the appropriate, the residential parking. And so, we'd have Level One, which would be the bottom level, and that would be for visitors, uh, and overflow, uh, parking, uh, for the Academy and Main surface parking, as well as the top two levels above the city would be the residential parking. One of the things that we have on Level One, which is coming off of West Main Street, is bringing in traffic into the deck off of West Main Street at Level One, so that the cities, uh, would have a direct entrance off of Academy into their Level Three of a hundred and thirty-six spaces. And then they can go down for the additional hundred and thirty-six faces on Level Two for a total of two seventy-two. And then Level One would have its entrance and exit coming off of West Main Street into the deck. So, there's, there's, and, and it's all interconnected in the deck, but there'll be ways that will isolate where and how people get directed and parked. But there's basically two ways in and out of the deck. And that's one of the things I wanted to point out, where at this point, uh, you know, Deck B only has one way in and out. The other thing that we're going to look at with, with Deck A to, to kind of work with the topography and you, you know, from Academy Street, that's about elevation nine hundred and sixty. And going down to Railroad Street at Hill Street, right by the mill, is about eight hundred and eighty feet. So, there's about seventy feet of elevation difference. So, we're going to look to see if potentially, and this is still working through our progress, is if instead of coming in at Level Three, the city may come in at Level Four or Five, and we're going to push the deck down utilizing that elevation that we can bury the deck. And that, that's going to allow a couple of things, but it's, it's, uh, we have to work through studying the geotechnical for, for rock and other considerations. But it also, it helps us and could help the city and, and future development, uh, as there looks to be development to this, to the south. It, it could help generate more fill to help fill the area to the south that eventually could get redeveloped, uh, in that blighted area, uh, that's about four or five acres to the south. So, it, that's something to look at as we study this, of what we might be able to do if we bury that deck more. There'd be opportunities to generate additional fill that we can push over to the south in order to have future development of that area for potentially townhomes, uh, or, or something of that, of that, uh, nature. And, and we're talking to, to folks about that right now. So, that's something we're continuing to further study, but I wanted to give you an update of, you know, how these two decks look, how their geometry is. Uh, Deck A is, is an L shape, and, and Deck B is, is more of a rectangle. And the difference in terms of the levels or the number, the different, they're, they're the same number of levels, but they're different. You know, obviously, we have a hundred and thirty-six spaces versus your sixty, average of sixty spaces per floor. So, it just allows, uh, a much, uh, efficient configuration for the city parking and the city use. And the entrance to the deck here would be about nine sixty, which is about where Academy Street is in front of City Hall, about nine sixty-two. So, we're, it's, it's also a very nice walk in terms of it's relatively flat. I have some elevations up here as well to kind of look at. This one elevation on the top left is the entrance from Academy, which is at this right now coming in on Level Three. And again, we're talking about maybe pushing it down another level or so. And so, I just wanted to kind of give you an idea of the look. And right now, they're both relatively naked, per se. They need to have some kind of covering. Uh, we plan to wrap Deck A with apartments, so it'd be vis, invisible. And I know Deck B needs to be looked at for some kind of screening, uh, because it's going to stand out pretty, pretty, pretty much there along Archer. And that's, that's that configuration there. And then the next, the next thing on the next slide. What we wanted to do is the community goals, which are out of your 2040 comprehensive plan, and we have some more of these to pass out. I know you all have this, but we highlighted, we highlighted the, you know, in addition to the, uh, the community goals that were gone through, through the comp plan, which were by consensus, there's about thirteen different yellow highlights, or, or maybe a little bit more, uh, in terms of the community goals and policies. I've listed five of them here, and both Parking Deck A and Parking Deck B obviously meet the, provide parking deck in downtown. But what we think is that Parking Deck A brings even more value to its location and how it can enhance other components that are in the community goals, which we have the encouraging, the not, the modular or nodular, uh, com, communities to reduce traffic and enhance walkability. And I'm going to show a chart here that kind of, and we can spend more time, uh, in the next work session, but I ju, generally wanted to kind of put this here so you guys can consider it. But the walkability and then maximizing and building on current assets with the Eder River and the Jones Building, the mill site, you know, these, these are things that we also pulled out of the comp plan, which is the first page of the eleven-by-seventeen package, which gives a great, fantastic overview of the trails in the city and the connectivity for walkability in the, in the city, as well as even goes on to the proposed extension of Northside Cherokee Boulevard. So, we took this, that was in the, in the comp plan, and really wanted to, and kind of zoom in, as you say, by Heritage Park, and then along the extension from Heritage Park, and then the then the crossover of the river at the Mill. And as we looked at it, we were trying to like, what kind of opportunities could there be that the city of Canton can, can tie in, in a walkable way to these trails? And so on your next page. Uh, on the next page here is a, is a blow up of the area. Again, Heritage Park and the Mill. And I, I know that there's the extension that is being, you know, developed and, and looking forward to connect the Mill. And then how do we connect the Mill into the city? And so we see an incredible opportunity, which ties into parking deck A, is as you come from the Mill, we put some dashes there. And in fact, if you flip over to the next page. It's a little bigger. So you'll see the dotted orange coming from the Mill at Railroad Street and crossing over into the parking deck. And the thinking is then take the elevator up. Some people might take the stairs. Depends on the fitness level and your, your challenge for the day. But come up through the deck and out the deck and come along into another very walkable way into Academy and Main or across the way into City Hall. And, or, or it, it tends to, because it's so walkable along Academy, it leads people to the front on Main Street to the shops that start, the historic shops that start at Academy and Main. And so it just naturally creates a way for people to start a- at that location. We think the challenge, and if you look, you have to kind of look a little harder. I had to put my reading glasses on a moment on, on the eleven by seventeens. But if you look a little harder, we, we put some grades and, and the challenge where the current parking deck B is planned is just the natural grades on Church Street. It's closer to an eight percent grade. So you're kind of walking up a hill. And again, on Hill Street, which, uh, is you're coming across on the Mill, Edoa here, you're, you're going up sixteen, seventeen percent grade. So we think that in tying to these other community goals, that parking A is having even more value to the city to consider versus parking deck B. And of course, there's the value of, you know, the public and private investment working together and working with the existing investments and what the next level of investment can do for the city of downtown. And that's a quick summary. And we, our next steps is continuing to get your input and feedback, continue the discussion to work on pricing as we go forward, so that we can start doing the compare and contrast on an economic standpoint, but there's also other values that the community has, uh, their goals for. And in addition, uh, to the additional needs and opportunities. Uh, and one of the last points to consider in the implementation, how we do that with the private and public agreement, that's something we should be talking about i- if you want to continue at some point as we get more into the details. And the last point that I wanted to make was sustainability, is as you consider where parking deck A and parking deck B might go, is what's the best location for the long term in the sustainability? That's it. Thank you.
From a, uh, financial standpoint and the public-private partnership, are you asking essentially, or will be asking, that the city pay for the equivalent of what, two hundred and seventy-two parking spaces and that the, 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 the developer, uh, pay for three hundred and sixty-eight out of the six forty? Is that what you're asking? That we pay for the ones that we need and the developer pays for what they need? Or are you saying something different?
Uh, I'm not saying anything yet about that. I think what we will be looking at is both the economics to build it and the value that it creates. And one of the things that we might want the city to consider is instead of placing, whether it be six million, seven million at parking deck B location, is to consider that in parking deck A location. It, it may be, you know, whatever the value of B is, to consider that into A as we get, move along. There's many more details to discuss, and I don't think there's a specific number at this point.
So, so we, the city, you may be asking the city to pay for more parking spaces than they actually get?
Um.
Is that, is that a fair statement?
No, I, I, I'm not so sure it is, um, because what we would propose here is that essentially in parking deck B, the city's looking at an option that's only three hundred and five spaces. And parking deck A, the city's looking at three hundred and fifty-five spaces, plus they get to keep land that they own that they may in the future do something different. So I, I guess what I'm saying is that it's a value-driven call. There's a location of where the city would want A versus B, and then how do we put something together that works for both parties?
The city would always have a future option of doing something with, uh, 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 B, wouldn't they, in the future?
Yes, we're not looking, that's, that's, I think the great opportunity is that B gives the city lots of flexibility and options in the future while still retaining the eighty-three spaces.
And if we paid more than our share of parking spaces on A and then built a deck on B, we'd be paying, looks like, too much to me.
Well, if the city shows to do that, uh, you know, again, I yield to the city council, and I just yield to looking at what's the best opportunity for the city to, to do. And we're just presenting all the, what we think is the considerations that go into that decision, that there's community goals and values in addition to cost. And there's also combining private and public investment for greater durability and sustainability in the downtown core of the city.
Okay. Ms. McGurk?
May I ask Mr. Peppers a question, Andrew?
Yes, ma'am.
What is our budget for the parking deck that we had talked about?
We don't know. We, we don't really have a top number on it because we didn't know until we bid it out. We have transportation money in sploshed, we have general building funds in sploshed. And we, we did a line item for economic development in there as well, knowing that we didn't know what the price tag would be.
So the, our parking debt will be paid for with sploshed funding?
Correct.
And that comes from sales tax?
Correct.
Countywide?
Correct.
So somebody visiting from Idaho that buys something here, their sales tax would go towards this. Great. Um, Mr. Good, parking deck B is going to go up.
Yes, ma'am.
Parking deck A is going to have a couple of floors subterrane.
Correct.
Knowing where we are in the terrain of Georgia, their likelihood of hitting rock is about a hundred percent. We have finite funds because we're dealing with taxpayers' money and sploshed money, and there's no huge guarantee that the sploshed money would come into realization if people don't spend money and we get sales tax. So is your company prepared to absorb the extra cost for hitting rock? Because we will have a finite budget of, you know, ten dollars is all we've got and it's all we can pay. Are you willing, is your company able to absorb extra money for blasting?
So our next steps is going through that pricing and getting very detailed into the geotechnical. We have a geotech, we'll be looking at some additional, uh, evaluation for the area and we're, you know, we've been working pretty quickly here on the clock to move things along, and that's going to be part of our next step of pricing. But in terms of your question of absorbing, we want to come up with a price, as you come up with the price with parking deck B, so that we have a good understanding of what those costs are before the parties ink a deal. And so in terms of absorbing, we, we will be looking to know those costs before we move too far ahead with other parties' pocketbook.
Okay. And as I look at this map, uh, will we be abandoning part of Hill Street Circle to build that parking deck on?
Yes, that, that's, um, Hill Street Circle is in the middle there of the parking deck, and if it isn't already abandoned, it would need to be abandoned.
Thank you so much.
Okay. Mr. Astine?
Yeah, I just have more statements rather than questions. Um, you know, I guess first I'd say, thank goodness, I was afraid that this thing was going to collect dust, and so there was a lot of work that went into it. So I do appreciate you guys spending some time and calling out and, and meeting a lot of those objectives, because I think they do still resonate, obviously, today. And as, as we've had a chance to meet with you and, uh, Mr. Harris and understand, uh, what your vision is, um, in, in these phases, you know, I've been able to share a lot of feedback with, with citizens and kind of explain direction and, and, and kind of paint a picture. I think people get very excited about where stuff is going. I think the connectivity also between the Mill and the historic downtown is, is something that's always a, a great concern, mostly because of, I was always trying to figure out how we're going to get people up that hill. It's, uh, it's very, um, it, it's going to require a lot of exercise, um, and I certainly don't want to do that. So it's good to have those options there. Um, I guess, you know, my only other point would be, you know, doubles in the details and look forward to just learning more about, uh, what, you know, the scenarios are, both from, from, from you guys as well as from the other proposal from, um, the other group.
Thank you. And, and the plan is what drew the Harris Group to, to the city of Canton. You know, as they noticed the, the plan to deal with the blight and the, and, and the desire by the city to consider urban renewal, that has brought the Harris Group here. And the, the comp plan that you've recently, uh, you, I know it took many, uh, meetings and, and a, uh, maybe a year or two of engagement to get to the comp plan you have in 2040, but it is very well thought out and has a lot of great things as we look at this. And it gives the Har- the Harris Group, as we're moving forward in the city of Canton, a real strong desire, because the city has such a strong desire to do these things in the downtown core and to really create a, a project that has the lifestyle components of the live, work, play, eat, and stay.
One, you reminded me of something, of the, the blight area. Um, so seeing that, I'd be curious to get a follow-up on, has there ever been a code enforcement in that area? I mean, you drive around and there's a, a road that's the size of that, you know, so narrow and, and there's cars parked. I don't even know where the cars would go because there's no driveways. Um, it feels like there's people on top of each other. I just, I can't imagine that it's, it's got to be up to code, but it, so.
So roadways and right-of-way's are what they are?
Yeah.
We kind of inherit what we got from the Mill on those.
Yeah. My point is, there's no, there's no driveways, so now you put a car on this narrow road and, and you can never, you could, you just barely get one car through, right?
Ca- council can at any time vote to restrict parking on certain streets. We haven't done that before. Chrisler Street's another example. Um, ultimately, over the last six months, code enforcement has encouraged and, and we've seen several houses on Academy Street painted as part of code enforcement efforts. Um, you know, at one point, a number of those properties were under contract with the Harris Group. Um, and so, you know, there's some of that going on too, so.
Okay. Ms. Wilson, did you have something?
I did. Um, I wanted to thank you for this detailed information, and I'm glad that we allowed you to bring us another presentation.
Thank you.
One of the things that I know I'll be asked is, the parking deck will be surrounded by apartments. How many apartments?
Up to two hundred and fifty.
About two hundred and fifty?
Yes, and we're working through that right now, too. It's a function of parking and the right fit and, and of course, the right unit mix.
Right. And this development would also take away a good many of the residential units that are there now.
Correct.
Okay, so my next question is for, for Dave. Could you talk to us just a little bit about the infrastructure as far as water and wastewater for two hundred and fifty apartments, taking into consideration that there will be some other residential properties that will be going away? So how are we set for that, for that kind of?
In, in terms of, um, treatment capacity as opposed to our system capacity, uh, our bottleneck right now is our wastewater treatment plant. Um, as you know, we're working on an expansion of two million gallons a day. Um, that is scheduled to, um, probably advertise for construction in the middle of next year with about, um, three-year construction period, which puts us in the middle of twenty, twenty-three, if my math is right. Currently, our, our plant is seeing about three million gallons a day on the app, and our permit limit is four. Based on approved plans and projects and projects that are under construction, um, there's a projected flow over the next three years of about seven hundred thousand gallons a day. So that's, that's going to be pushing our permit limit, um, slightly before our plant is up and running. So there are some, some infrastructure issues that we're going to have to work through. Um, you know, some of the, the assumptions we made, you know, maybe there, the developments come on a little later than, than we've anticipated. Maybe some of the flows are a little less than, than we anticipate, but based on our standards that we do now, that's, that's kind of where we're at. And that's assuming there's nothing else coming in.
And I think that's something that we need to remember as we go forward with any other new large developments that the infrastructure, probably three to six years before the wastewater treatment plant would be expanded?
Uh, twenty twenty-three, it should be online.
So closer than six years? That's good. Okay. Thank you. And, um, it's what, if you were to begin this development, say, the first, if we gave you the go-ahead to begin the development, say, the first of, of next year, how long are you looking for to complete it? The parking deck, the apartments, buying the property, everything?
So that's a really good question. And what I would say is, assuming we got all the entitlements, you know, there's agreement on the deck and the entitlements for the apartments, uh, and then at that point, there would need to be, uh, the associated architecture and engineering drawings and go through the process to get a permit. You know, we've looked at it and, you know, probably a, a best-case scenario until we fine-tune it would be a, a construction start, you know, in a year from now, maybe eighteen months. Uh, these projects that are with the parking deck and with doing the, you know, residential that wraps a deck, you know, those, those can take close to eighteen months or, or a little longer to build, subject to the weather, which we had a very wet year last year. And, you know, one of the other things that we need to look at as we organize all this is dealing with the area that we call Phase Three, which is, there are about thirty-some-odd blighted properties, is how to address that as well and the timing. Uh, whether it be parking deck A or parking deck B, there's going to be, in either scenario, a tremendous amount of construction workers that are going to need to have places to park. And one of the things that we've looked at is as we can move some dirt over, if we can kind of work together in dealing with that last phase, and I know Mark has dealt with a lot of, of the owners over there, and I think it's, is a separate meeting probably to have to talk about how to do that and the timing of that and how that could all work together. But I know there's a strong desire to work with the city and kind of get a good plan for Phase Three, which kind of also affects everybody's construction, whether it be parking deck B or A.
Right.
So I, I hope that addresses it a little bit.
It, it does, and I'm not.
And we will work through the details.
Right. Those are estimates, I understand that, but that's helpful. Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Young?
Um, one question or comment I wanted to make. I know in this city right now, apartment is a dirty word. Um, but you're not just talking about your average apartment. Y'all are, from what you've told me and told others, y'all are talking like class A plus, 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 like almost condo, condominium quality living spaces. So I just wanted to make that clear, that we're not just talking about any old apartments. We're talking about high-end, um, aimed at a specific market, right?
Yes. Um, in fact, it's an opportunity that the city of Canton did a study and, uh, with Noel Consulting back in twenty sixteen, and they forecasted us coming. And they have in their study, uh, what's called a garden urban slash lifestyle that's A-plus, and this is exactly the type of product that we're looking at. And this is exactly the type of product that we're looking at doing, which is that, as you refer to, condo-grade. And they couldn't have described it any better in this chart of the type of customer and the quality of the product that we're looking at here. And so it's something that, again, that the city had commissioned, and we totally agree that the urban lifestyle, that customer who's looking for that live, work, play, whether it be young, old, or somewhere in between, this would be a fantastic location, and you need to have that quality product. And it's a higher-end, higher-renting product that has more of the condo-grade feel.
How many, I'm sorry, Ms. McGreev, go ahead.
Thank you. I was wondering, who will manage this property and will you maintain ownership of it?
So, Mr. Harris has been actively involved in, as you know, in the development and managing across the street. We anticipate that our involvement will continue. We'll be working through the details, but we will be taking on, or looking to take on a larger multifamily development partner that we can share and impart the vision of what we see. But we see that we'll likely be working closely with them to execute the plan that we're presenting to you.
It is my responsibility and the responsibility of everyone sitting here to make sure that any development that we approve is not only good for now, but 35 and 50 years down the road. Are you open to having the city help with your covenants and your HOA restrictions and requirements? Because this is going to take up a huge amount of real estate in our city for which we may or may not approve this, but let's say we do approve it. It's our responsibility that this be a quality project 50 years from now because it will remain, and some of us will not be here. So are you open to our input on your restrictions and your HOA covenants to make sure this property is maintained and remains a Class A product?
Yes. In many cases where these types of apartments go, there are, in fact, sometimes private overlays that help with the architectural and long-term restrictions and CCNRs and so forth. So we are open, and, you know, we would like to work with the city on that, you know, and because ultimately, you know, after we're gone, we'd like it to be a very well-developed, sustainable development. And it needs to be because this is also where, if you consider Parking Deck A is going to be located as well, it's going to be a long-term fixture in the community, and it, and it needs to have that. And so we are definitely open, we're working with the city on that.
Thank you. And can you describe the types of security that you're going to be using?
So we're working through that, and we're going to be looking at the options of how to keep it light and keep it bright inside the deck and different ways of what we can do. We understand, whether it be Parking Deck B or Parking Deck A, both of those need to be properly secured. And so we're going to be studying that more on how to do it. We do have in our plan right now, and we're working through it, floor-to-floor, we have an 11-foot, floor-to-floor plan. The current Parking Deck B is 10-foot, 6 inches or 10-foot 8 inches, something like that. So we're a little higher floor-to-floor than the current Parking Deck B. That could be modified a little bit, one way or the other. 10, you know, the Parking Deck B is still fine, but we're a little higher. Sometimes height, even a few inches, gives a better feeling of not being claustrophobic. Then there's other things that, in terms of paint color and other things that can do, you know, there's, we just have to study it closely with the city. But we will be concerned about security, and I know from an apartment operation, they will be equally concerned about security as well, you know, in that operation as well. So we're going to be working through the details, and we'd like to continue to get your input. We don't have a lot of specific details yet to share, other than we will be looking at that.
Thank you.
We have to be careful because we've got a good track record growing on safety downtown. We introduced a restaurant district and crime went down, so we can't have a parking deck come in and go up.
Correct. Correct. Absolutely.
Thank you.
But being close in the city and the police department being close, I'm feeling like we can all together figure out a good plan for security.
Tonight, we've had, looks like, requests for some 370 apartments coming. What others, I know we've got the, the one at the old hospital that's, where are they?
They withdrew their application.
Okay, okay. How many was that? Do you remember?
Somewhere around 250.
Okay. So somebody else will be back in here soon, I guess. Are there others that are kind of in the pipeline or that, no?
There's someone that has indicated the possibility of some apartments associated with the master plan development and some additional property to be annexed into the city up above the Walmart area that has indicated the possibility of apartments with that. There are still those apartments down at Prominence, the 75 units the City Council approved several years ago. There's some undeveloped property associated with, associated with Prominence Development in which our office has received six, seven phone calls in regards to all of that property being changed from industrial or commercial for apartments. There are folks looking at some property on Jackie Moore Lane relative to the possibility of apartments that have come in and discussed that option. That property off of Jackie Moore Lane is on RM15. They are aware, would have to go through a conditional use permit approval process. Those are things that I have had discussions with people about. Nothing has formally been submitted in the way of an application yet.
Okay, that's what I wanted, I guess then, when it comes to, we have to think about that sewer expansion. We do. Critical point that's coming up, and it looks like it may be first come, first served on some of this stuff, I don't know. But anyway, anyone else have a, have a question, comment? Thank you, Rob.
Thank you. Thank you very much.
Okay, you have in your agenda package the council meeting draft minutes from August the 15th, the special call council meeting from August 26th. Are there any changes or corrections to be made to those?
Motion to approve.
We have a motion to approve. We have a second.
Second.
Mr. McGreev made the motion. Mr. Essie seconded that motion. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, no. All members voting for the motion. Also, you have your financial statements, which is for acknowledgement only for the month of July. Are there any questions or comments there? Mr. Ingram, our CFO, is here, and we'll answer those if there are any. Okay, if not, we will go our 10-minute public input period. Stephanie Forte.
Hello, good evening. I'm Stephanie Forte, owner of the antique shop Junkrunk Jones and the walking tour Canton Historic Haunts. And I know as we get close to the one-year mark of the Restaurant District Ordinance trial period, I just wanted to give an update as a business owner on Main Street of how it's impacted my businesses. And it's positively impacted my businesses. Simply implementing that trial in October, my profits have increased. I was able to add staffing for both businesses. I was able to hire two employees in the shop and additional tour guide for the tour company. I also was able to add store hours several days a week for every single season since it's been implemented, which historically, since four years of being in business, was unheard of for us. It encouraged visitors to spend more time and more money with us, Main Street merchants. We also did not witness any safety concerns during that trial period, and it seemed that everyone was enjoying the rules responsibly. So in closing, I'm still the same family-friendly shop in the same family-friendly town, so thumbs up there. And if it would be of any assistance to anyone on council, I'd be happy to share any of the business stats or business metrics if it would help. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Okay. Lauren Taylor? Welcome.
Hi, just to far a start, my name is Lauren Taylor. I'm the events director for Students Demand Action North Metro Atlanta and the co-leader for Students Demand Action Cherokee High School. City councilors, people often underestimate the power of local action. When someone sees something they want to change in our country, a common response is to blame the federal government for doing too much or not enough. Needless to say, most attempts at petitioning the federal government fail. If we want to change something in our country, we have to start pushing for that change within our communities. All political, all politics is local. That's why I'm here to speak to you today, to address the national issue of gun violence and what we can do as a community to address this issue. Councilors, please take a resolution in support of federal background checks for all gun sales and a resolution in support of a federal extreme risk law into consideration. Universal background checks and extreme risk protection orders, commonly known as red flag laws, are crucial to ensuring the safety of people across the nation and your constituents here in Canton. Universal background checks would ensure that background checks are being done on buyers for every firearm purchase. Currently, a quarter of firearms are bought through private sales without background checks. In fact, last week, the shooter in West Texas got the firearm he purchased to injure 25 people and kill seven through a private sale because he didn't initially pass his background check. The fact that this man was denied a firearm in the first place and easily found another place to get one without a background check in 24 hours is appalling to me, and it shouldn't have happened. An extreme risk law is a type of protection order that allows family members and law enforcement to petition to a court to temporarily remove guns from a person in crisis, empowering families and law enforcement to keep guns out of the hands of those at risk of injuring themselves or others. To be frank, suicide is a public health crisis within the United States right now, and is no stranger to the people in Canton, Georgia, especially young people. In Georgia, firearms make up a total of 70% of suicide deaths annually. Coming from someone who struggles with mental illness, it's hard. But with a gun, it's not hard enough to take your own life, and families need to be empowered to help their loved ones help themselves. So in honor of September being National Suicide Awareness Month and Prevention Month, I ask you to take this resolution into special consideration. The people you see here today in red are here because local action is so crucial to fighting the gun violence epidemic. In order for the federal government to feel the weight of the nation's desire for common-sense gun legislation, we have to start locally. Because all politics is local, because you, councilors, may be just our best shot at forcing the Senate to truly understand the importance of this cause. Thanks.
Thank you. John, is that Peterman?
Good evening, councilors, Mr. Mayor. And my colleague Lauren did mention it, but for those of us who are in red to represent Students Moms Demand Action, if y'all would stand real quick. This is the portion of the attendance here at the City Council meeting that is here tonight to represent the faction of those who live in Cherokee County and Canton, Georgia, who want stronger gun laws, including universal background checks and red flag laws. For those of you in the chamber who are unaware, who haven't heard yet, on September the 3rd, a man waiting in line at Canton City Hall threatened to shoot city staff members because he was unsatisfied with the service he received in the Utilities Department. Clearly, aware of the danger of these threats in light of many recent mass shootings, the Canton Police Department did arrest this man on charges of making terroristic threats. Senate Majority Leader Mitch McConnell has refused to act to pass laws mandating universal background checks on all gun sales. He has refused to act to bring laws already passed by the House of Representatives to introduce red flag laws or extreme risk protection orders that Lauren mentioned. Canton must not be the next American town to join the exclusive but undesired club of hosts of mass shootings. There are opponents to passing a federal red flag law. These opponents claim that among the company of a majority of gun owners is opposition to these measures, and these opponents claim that red flag laws do not prevent tragedies, but both of these claims are absolutely empirically, uh, false, excuse me. According to a poll conducted by Heart Research Associates, 84% of gun owners support passing a red flag law. The figure for support of stronger gun laws, red flag laws, among Americans is 89%, so nearly 90% of Americans support passing a stronger federal red flag law. These are not controversial laws. The only people who oppose these laws are the factually misinformed or the ideologically extreme. Furthermore, red flag laws have proven effectiveness in stopping both suicides and mass shootings. An analysis of mass shootings in the United States from 2009 to 2017, conducted by Every Town for Gun Safety, found that over half of mass shooters exhibited warning signs before the shooter, or before the shooting. Take the May 2014 Isle of Vista, California shooting. The shooter displayed serious warning signs, threats of homicide and suicide, but his parents told law enforcement. They told the police, but he did not meet the criteria to be involuntarily institutionalized. He did not meet the criteria to be put in jail for these threats. He kept his guns, and three weeks later, he killed six people. California then passed a red flag law. Empirically, red flag laws have been extremely effective in preventing tragedies even as far as suicides, according to the Educational Fund to Stop Gun Violence. In Connecticut, the state's red flag law was used 762 times between 1999 and 2013. Of these cases, police found firearms in 99% of reported cases and suspended access to an average of seven guns per case in Connecticut. These are not big-game hunters. They're in Connecticut. These guns that are being suspended are going to be used for nefarious purposes unless access is able to be suspended to people who are in crisis. After Connecticut's red flag law was passed, it's found to be responsible for a 14% reduction in the firearm suicide rate, 14%. Passing a red flag law is not the only thing we can do, though. Many people don't know this, but background checks are not required on all gun sales. The federal background check law that is currently in effect is a decade and a half old. Or actually, two decades and a half. When it was written, online gun sale platforms like ArmsList.com did not exist. In 2018, there were over a million advertisements for online gun sales for which no background check is required. Georgia has one of the worst rates in the country for prohibited buyers looking to purchase firearms online. As a matter of fact, according to an independent study of ArmsList conducted by Everytown, one in nine purchasers on this website is prohibited to go into a gun store and purchase a firearm. These people are going on the internet because they know that they are able to legally and quickly access a firearm without a background check. There is not currently a federal law that prohibits ArmsList from allowing private sales of guns through their service. In states like North Carolina that require background checks for online sales, in this case for handguns, up to 80% of sellers indicate flat-out in their advertisements that they require background checks. This is not rocket science. People that want to use guns for evil purposes, people who are in mental states that would require taking guns away temporarily, should not be able to have access to these firearms either by purchase or in times of crisis. We need a federal law that prohibits this practice. There could not be a city municipal ordinance to prohibit this practice because Georgia's General Assembly prohibits local governments from making any regulations on the sale of firearms or ammunition. But the Canton City Council can send a strong and credible message to the Senate of the United States. As horrible as this threat that was made is, it bolsters the council's credibility on the issue of preventing gun violence. Y'all have been personally touched by this issue. That is not something that any public servant, any citizen, should ever have to face when they're doing their job. The council should act as soon as possible to bring a resolution to the floor and pass it, urging the Senate to pass strong red flag laws and universal background checks. Our city has come too close to being the host of a gun tragedy to allow this moment to pass. pass. Thank you all very much for your time and have a great evening.
Thank you. Richard Kemp.
Mr. Mayor, members of council, I'd like to echo the statements that were presented by the owner of Junk Drunk Jones. I do think that, that, that the whole entertainment district, it went better than what many had thought. Indeed, if you all recall, in the sanctuary next door, opponent after opponent lined up and said that there'd be cups all over the place and drunkards all over the place, just none of that happened. I would ask that you take into consideration all these things when you go to discuss these things and if you should deem it appropriate, I would ask that, since because it is an ordinance, if you would call for a public hearing. Also, I wasn't going to make any comments on this, but I feel compelled to now. The gentleman who had spoken before me had called on you, as long as the other female speaker, to pass a resolution to present to Congress. He correctly stated that the Georgia General Assembly has preempted you from enacting or causing there to be enforced any ordinance. You're also prohibited from enacting or causing there to be enforced any resolution. If you read the preemption statute, it's more broad now. It prohibits you from doing any ordinance or resolution on that matter other than applied under Georgia law. Therefore, if you violate the preemption statute, you run the risk of being sued. Per Georgia Code Section 1611, 173, subsection GS, can be advised by your attorney. Please do not violate the laws of the state of Georgia. Thank you.
Thanks, sir. Shannon Good, 168 Birchwood Pass. Okay. Not here. Okay, that's all we have for the public input period, so we'll move on with our whole business. Discussion and possible action on an updated consent order from the EPD. Mr. Atabia?
I believe it was last meeting we had received a consent order and, and was signed. Was it last meeting?
Get up to the microphone.
We, we subsequently met with EPD to, to review their, their fines and had about nine of them removed and subsequently, they gave us a revised consent order that probably, that needs a signature now. Fines were reduced from a little over $50,000 to a little under $41,000. And along with that, we have been working with them in trying to identify the source of some of our problems. We've done extensive sampling and testing and spent around $30,000 in that effort and EPD has said that that money will be used towards this fine as part of our corrective action plan, so.
Mr. Peppers, we need, we need to vote on this tonight to authorize the mayor to sign that consent order.
Yes, we have a period of 15 days after we receive it.
That's, that's getting, getting pretty close, so. Do we have a motion that we authorize the mayor to sign the consent order?
So moved.
Second.
If y'all made the motion, Mr. Goodman seconded the motion. Any other discussion or questions about this? If not, those in favor, seconded by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. All members voting for the motion. All right, new business. Discussion of the restaurant district ordinance to expire on October the 1st, 2019. All right? Do we have, anybody want to make any comments regarding that? We've heard from it and.
Procedurally, I guess I'd just ask, I know the ordinance says that it's valid until October 1st, 2019. Some action, if we wanted to continue, would need to be required to rewrite the ordinance, correct?
That's correct.
I think, I mean, Mr. Pepper brought up a, a good point. You know, some of the other feedback that I've received from business owners is just the cluediness of it, you know, in terms of there's a lot of requirements, in terms of, you know, the, how it needs to be marked and dated and, and as, by the server and, and so there's certainly some opportunities to simplify. At the same time, I know that we've got a, just a, a general concern about just the alcohol ordinances in general, not just the restaurant district, so, you know, I think I'd, it'd be appropriate to probably consider that as well as part of this potentially. So just, just some thoughts around, you know, my feedback on, on what's working, not working. I do appreciate the feedback from members of the community as well. I think they echo a lot of the sentiments that we've heard.
So we would, what would need to be done is that would need to be amended to remove or add or whatever we decided to do? The ordinance would need to be amended?
Yes, if you take no action, it expires, so there would have to be an ordinance amendment removing that date.
Sunset date, yeah. And/or expanding on that or?
Well, yes, if there are any changes, yes, that'd be another.
It remains the same, you just remove the date. If it, if it's expanded, then it would need to be included in there.
Any changes.
I would, I would just like to reiterate that I was the one that asked that it sunset on October the 1st, 2019. And at that time, I asked that we ask questions about the years, the year that had passed, what had happened. And we heard from Chief Mitchell that, from the police department, because we had a lot of input, that it was going to cause crime to go up in downtown. And I believe we heard from Chief Mitchell last, was it last meeting, that crime had not gone up. They had not made additional arrests, right, Chief Merriman?
Yes, ma'am.
And the other thing that I asked was that we get a report on cleanup cost from the, from having the carry, the, the, carry ordinance, that there would be a lot of, of trash and cleanup. And I think Mr. Hooper's here. Have you had any additional cleanup from this? Okay. And then the other question that I think I asked Mr. Peppers to research were how many businesses reported that there was alcoholic behavior in their business because of this ordinance? Have we had any reports of businesses, or maybe Chief Merriman can answer that, businesses that have had, had problems with people coming in under the influence?
I haven't had anybody contact me and say they've had an issue with somebody coming in with an open container. I'm not saying it hasn't happened, but nobody's reached.
Right, that, that was one of the issues that was raised during the discussion. So the only thing that I would like to add to Mr. Dyer is whenever you propose the, the new ordinance for us to consider is that we not go past midnight. I've heard from other cities who have an entertainment district, that is, the, the businesses are open until 2:00 a.m. And it seems that the problems occur between midnight and 2:00 a.m. So I'd like for us to consider that, 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 that we do not have businesses open past midnight. That's my input.
Okay. Anyone else? Ms. Grubbs.
May I ask Ms. Wilson the question?
Sure.
You said you didn't want it to go past midnight. Do you not want a sale to occur after midnight? Or do you mean you don't want anyone on the street with a beverage that they purchased at 11:30 p.m.?
I think what I'm, what I'm getting at, and let me just give you the essence of what. I talked with a couple of different cities who have, one was Carrollton. They have college-age students. We have college-age students around here and they said the problems happen after midnight. So I think it would be up to us to determine if it's a drink not sold past midnight in the entertainment district or what do we, what, what does that comprise? So that's what I want us to consider. It seems that the problems occur if the, if the, if alcohol is sold after midnight or, or carried on the street after midnight.
Right.
Not particularly sold.
Okay, so you want, you don't want, I'll take it personal. You don't want me to walk on the street after midnight with my beverage from downtown kitchen to the gazebo?
Right.
Gotcha, just clarifying.
Don't put it so personally.
That's okay.
Put a college student or somebody.
I don't mind, I can take it, thank you. I just want to make sure that, you know, we're talking about the same thing that.
Right, I, I just wanted us to take that into consideration. I think it's something we.
So no open beverages on the streets after midnight?
Correct.
Okay. I have some questions.
Sure.
That I'd like to direct to Chief Merrifield, if I may.
Of course.
Sorry to put you on the spot and if you don't know the answers, please don't worry about it, but if you could get the information for the next meeting, I'd appreciate it. Any DUIs in the city, have they been sourced back to the entertainment district or the restaurant district?
I don't have that information, ma'am. I, I have not heard that.
All right, and stops that you've made outside the city, out, outside of the restaurant district? You don't know if they, they can be sourced back to the restaurant district? Have there been any public nuisance from drinking inside the restaurant district?
No, ma'am, none that I'm aware of.
Right, so no one's.
And as far as, if I may, as far as where someone's coming from on a DUI, that would, it would, that would entail us to have to hand pull every DUI arrest because that's certainly not something you, you could query. We don't have a software that queries that. We would have to hand pull that and quite honestly, not every officer puts in his report where somebody's coming.
Sure. And you don't have any reports, off the top of your head, of any disruptive lewd conduct taking place in the restaurant district with an open container involved?
No, ma'am, I do not.
And Mr. Peppers, may I, may I ask Mr. Peppers a question?
You don't have to ask me, go ahead, ask him.
Mr. Peppers, may I ask you a question? Thank you, chief, I appreciate that so much.
Yes, ma'am.
In talking with the restaurants, ballpark, how many people are using this privilege? Is it a, a great number of people using the privilege of having an open container that they can walk from one place to another?
There, so, to date, I've heard from four of the businesses in the downtown area that have port. And of those four, they say that they average between 10 and 12 to-go containers on Fridays and Saturdays a week. Having said that, they preface that by saying, you know, some of those are first Fridays, some of those may be special events as well, but on average, about 10 to 12 per week. I specifically asked the question to those individuals, did they think there was any confusion on the staff side as it relates to the ordinance? They don't seem to think there's any confusion on the staff side as to what they can and cannot do. They both noted to me, or all four of them noted to me, that there is some confusion sometimes from the citizens' side as to what time it starts, what day it starts and things like that. But basically, once they give them the information, there's not an issue. And, and I will, I will follow up on your question that you asked of, of Chief Merrifield. Chief Mitchell had submitted to me a list of comparisons of arrests in what we consider to be the entertainment or restaurant district boundaries. There were seven between October 1st of last year and this report was pulled in July. So there were seven. Of those seven, only two of those occurred on a Friday or Saturday during the time that the restaurant district is in operation. And of those two, one was a violation of smoking ordinance that led to an arrest because the individual had a warrant, outstanding warrant, and one was a public drunkenness.
So the first one you mentioned, the violation of smoking, that had nothing to do with an open container, they were just being taught to about smoking?
That's correct.
So that.
And the second one, which was public drunkenness, actually occurred in the, what we consider patio dining area of a restaurant downtown. So they would have been able to have been out in that area with a drink anyways under our.
So that one also had nothing to do with the open container restaurant district?
Well, I can't say it didn't have anything to do with it because they could have brought a drink from somewhere else, but the actual location was right in front of a restaurant which had sales, so, you know, whether or not the person brought a drink with them or they had a drink there, I don't know.
Well, do the restaurants allow you to bring your drink from going coastal into mezatta?
Well, that would be up to the individual restaurant. We don't mandate that under our ordinance, that they have to allow it or that they can restrict it.
Okay, thank you.
Anyone else? Mr. Goodman?
Yeah, I don't know, chief, if you knew of this, but I had someone tell me that on Cinco de Mayo, that there was an incident down at, actually, it's where the dance studio is, that someone broke the window there, was intoxicated, broke that window. They called 911. They sent, I don't know why, they sent Cherokee County, that we're much closer than, than anyone would have been. We're right across the park there, but they responded and arrested that person for public drunkenness. And so you may not have been aware of it.
That was, that was the second one that I noted on here. While they, if I recall the situation, they did break something, but when they were arrested, they were in front of the restaurant when it occurred.
Yeah, and if it, if I remember correctly, the mayor asked Chief Mitchell last time because we had a higher increase of public intoxication stops and I think it was triple what it had been prior, if I remember right.
I, I think it was like 67, at that meeting, like 67% increase over the same period last year, is I believe what the, the sheet data had that, that he presented. But now that in no way could tell you where, where, where they were or where they came from.
That's correct.
Right, and I, I believe one of his comments, part of the issue you have with alcohol-related incidents is you may have somebody who's coming from another jurisdiction that gets stopped in the city. We may make a stop on the interstate where it's somebody passing through, not intending to stop in the city. It does become a little bit questionable.
I think, I think chief also said that the populations increased in the year also. Population increased.
But also, I've been told that Cherokee County is actually stopping a lot of, of people inside the city and that doesn't show up on our stats as well. So that's just some information that I had talked to some of the sheriff's department and they, they mentioned. So just thought I'd give you that information.
Anyone else? Dale?
Well, I think everyone's aware, when this was voted on last year, that I had asked for several restrictions or changes and then ultimately wound up voting against the ordinance. And surprisingly, very few people have asked me why. And so I thought I would explain why, because I think it's germane to this discussion. When I went into that meeting with my list of things I wanted to see, and everyone was very agreeable and, but then if we had, and if we had had our vote, that, right when that last concession was made, I would have voted for it. I was prepared to. And then the discussion continued and every single question that was asked was, I don't know, we don't know yet, we'll figure that out, I don't know. And ultimately, that was one too many I don't knows and so I ultimately voted against it. And I was hoping during this period that a lot of those questions would be worked out and apparently, a lot of the fears were unfounded, a lot of the hopes were unfounded. But I think before we consider extending this, which I think is probably what we're talking about, we might look back at, do we have? talking about, um, we might look back at, do we have all the procedures in, in place? I know the ordinance calls for the restaurant to display a sign with certain verbiage. I know in my forays into the restaurants downtown, I have yet to see one, stuff like that. So I'm wondering if we might need to look at our educating, education program for the restaurants. We had, had discussions about, um, custom cups, so that there was no question that they came from the downtown restaurants, and apparently, they're using just standard blank solo cups, which is, you know, as long as there's not a problem, that's okay, but it's just not what we had discussed last time, so I would like to see if we could get some answers on those questions. And I'm pleased that we had no incidents, and I'm, I would have liked, I hoped it would have done what everybody hoped it would do economically as a driver. And I agree with Mr. Estes, I think this definitely needs to be thoroughly discussed with our entire alcohol ordinances, um, because I know we've had a lot of discussions, we had citizens' group work on our ordinances and make a lot of recommendations that have never been enacted or discussed again. So I would, I think going forward, we do need to look at all of our alcohol as a unified ordinance, rather than just a piece here and piece there, so I just wanted to throw that out there. Thank you.
Anyone else? Mr. Ashton?
I'd like to ask that, based on the feedback, one proposal be that Mr. Dyer come back with, uh, just the one change to extend it a year, only because there's no other arbitrary date that comes to mind quickly, but to give us time to, um, you know, further evaluate the overall alcohol ordinance in its entirety, and, uh, just for simplicity's sake, keep everything as it is for now, and, uh, come back with alternative proposals to the language. So that would be my proposal, as simple as that.
Okay. Anyone else?
I'm just wanting to ask, um, we had an alcohol study committee to study our ordinance, what, year before last? Did we change the ordinance at all after that study committee made its report?
I don't think so.
No.
I don't think so.
Okay.
Anyone else? Okay, let's move along then. All right, next item, discussion on renewing waste management sludge hauling and disposal contract.
Last year, we did an RFP on our sludge hauling, uh, contract. Waste Management was awarded the contract, and it's, was set up as a four-year contract renewable every year. They have come back, there have been some changes within the, the industry regarding their disposal fees and everything, but they have come back with the, with a new proposal, um, for, for the upcoming year. The price is going from thirty-three dollars a ton to eighty dollars a ton. Yeah, that's, that's everybody's reaction, and it's, it's not just us, it's throughout the state. It was on WSB a couple of months ago, uh, City of Atlanta was going through the same thing. I was at a conference, and this was one of the issues that was discussed, and costs throughout the area are ranging from eighty-five to a hundred and ten dollars a ton. And a lot of it has to do with the way the landfills are managed, and, and how much of this special material, which is pretty much wet, um, they can take in. So, um, there's, there's really, uh, unfortunately, this time, not a lot we can do, we've looked into, um, the cost of doing a sludge dryer, and the cost for that versus, you know, the cost on, um, transporting dry waste. The, the, the tipping fees are a lot less, they're down to about forty dollars, but the cost for a dryer is, is fairly substantial. Now, I will say that Waste Management has indicated, uh, because it's such a widespread problem, they're looking into installing, um, or considering, um, central drying facilities at their, at their, uh, landfills, so, but that's still in the works. But unfortunately, it is, is really not what we can, a lot we can do right now. We did have another proposal from another hauler. They were looking at a hundred dollars a ton, plus additional costs for the, for the dumpsters.
So, have we, have we sought, uh, sought out other proposals, I mean, actually advertised or, or contacted them and asked for a formal proposal?
We, we have asked for one, yes. Uh, we did, we did get one, and like I say, they were about a hundred dollars a ton, plus, I think their trip charges were a little further because they were up in Gordon County.
When we, when we put this out the last time, we only had two bidders.
Yeah.
Based on the specialty, um, and, and part of the issue that we're having is same issues they're having at facilities across the area, the states being a little bit more rigorous on what can be placed on farms in South Georgia, and it's really increasing the cost for North Georgia sewer systems.
What, what did sludge hauling cost us the last year?
Two hundred and fifty thousand dollars or something.
So you're talking about going up to seven hundred thousand from?
Maybe, yeah, I'm, I'm trying to remember off the, I don't know off the top of my head, but our, our, our tons that we're producing, um, with one belt press, we have a temporary belt press right now, uh, with one press, we're probably in the vicinity of about four hundred tons a month. With our second press, we're probably pushing six hundred tons a month.
It's one of those things, you gotta get rid of it.
Yeah, I mean, it, it.
Don't want to hang around too long.
It's a crappy situation.
People, people don't want us to hold on to it.
So, I notice in the, um, the compensation, that it looks like it is capped in the future to a CPI, a Consumer Price Index?
I'd have, I'd have to double check on that one, I don't, I, the letter, you know, the formal proposal that I got from them was, was this hundred and twenty dollars a ton, I mean, eighty dollars a ton, plus a hundred and twenty dollars a trip charge.
Yeah, and then they say, uh, Waste Management proposes economic price adjustment based on the Consumer Price Index for waste, for water, sewer, and trash.
This is, this is what they gave us last year, and then they sent us a letter saying that we can't, based on the, the conditions now, we, we can't work with that, so.
So.
They sent us that letter back in. Oh, they didn't date it, but it was like in, in July.
Even though this is August fifteenth dated, it could, they, they had the same language last year.
Okay.
The, the big issue is, it's such a specialty service, the contract we get is going to allow our hauler to get out based on environmental issues. And because they have the ability to get out, they also have the ability to come back with new terms.
Yeah. But their contract's up, you know, September thirtieth, so.
The city has spent about two hundred thousand dollars for the past two years for sludge hauling, we budgeted two hundred fifty thousand a year.
To, for each year?
Two hundred thousand for each year, yes.
Okay, so that's gonna be, it's gonna be a big jump, but, yeah. Anyone else? Thank you, Dave.
Thank you.
When, when do we have to decide that?
We can, we can vote, you can vote next time at the regular meeting.
Okay. All right, uh, Mr. Ingram, discussion of franchise audit, we may have sort of already done that.
Yes, very quickly, I just want to add, y'all have a copy of the seven thousand dollar agreement, which is the single-time audit, the ten thousand was that annual continually, we can opt out at any time. Please review those, if you have any questions, let me know, I can get those to Mr. Fender, and we can get those answered. Also, I don't want to make a formal recommendation right yet, I'd like an opportunity to speak to Mr. Peppers, uh, uh, think about this a little bit further before we bring a recommendation to council, if any, so.
Okay, sounds good. Anyone have a question about that, that we haven't discussed? Okay, thank you. All right, uh, next item, discussion of the 2019 L-MIG paving projects. Mr. Scott Hooper?
Yeah, my, um, this is the contract for the, uh, two thousand nineteen L-MIG, uh, paving project. The project was, uh, put out to bid for base repairs, resurfacing, and restripping on, uh, these roads. Uh, it's Marietta Highway on the, uh, south end from the five seventy-five bridge to the city limits, um, Riverstone Parkway on the north end from five seventy-five to the city limits, uh, Olive Brown Industrial Parkway, uh, and Waleska Street from, from Riverstone Parkway to the train tracks coming into town. We received four bids from paving contractors, Bartow Paving was low bid at five hundred thirty-eight thousand, two hundred twenty-eight dollars and four cents.
From Ri, from Riverstone Parkway to the railroad tracks?
Yeah, uh, right here, coming across Sandy Hook Bridge, and Sandy Hook Bridge would be restripped in that as well.
Okay. Ms. Wilson?
Are you recommending the low bidder?
Yes.
And how, do we have experience with Bartow paving?
Yeah, they've done our paving for the last.
Oh, yeah.
Three, maybe, ever since I've been here.
Okay.
They've won our L-MIG since I've been here.
Right.
Yeah.
Okay. Just wanted to be sure.
Were these on the rated list and all that?
Yeah, uh, they fall within the five-year plan, all these roads.
Okay.
The main reason we selected Highway five was to clean up, uh, the area right there that didn't get paved on the south side.
South camp.
On, on the south end of the bridge, from the, uh, bridge to the, uh, city limit, it, that part kind of got overlooked because of the pavement management system segments our roads, and that was a segment that was left out when we did the other part, and then on the north end, that was a portion that was in the same, kind of in the same situation.
Well, and on the north end, too, we wanted to wait until GDOT finished their paving, and as you know, they did Riverstone last year, and the county actually did from city limits north, so we're filling in that area. We, there's one spot in front of Bojangles, I don't know how many times we've patched it.
Yeah.
And we get the calls and complaints on it, so.
And it's, this, this is not a long segment, but a lot of this is really wide.
Yeah.
Six lanes down through there, most of those.
Anyone have any questions? Thank you. Next item, discussion on transportation improvement project solicitation, 2019 for Highway one forty improvements.
Good evening, thank you. Um, so I'm here tonight to discuss the transportation improvement solicitation for 2019 for Highway one forty. As you probably remember, a couple of months ago, I brought an item to, um, improve the intersection of Highway one forty and Riverstone Parkway, and we just discussed various funding options for that, we talked about the TIP project. And so, that's what I'm here about tonight, is because, uh, ARC has opened up the solicitation for those projects. And, um, currently, the city is not LAP certified, which you have to be in order to, uh, utilize a TIP project. The county is LAP certified, so they can sponsor the city and work with us to, um, do these projects.
Back up, what kind of certified?
LAP certified, it stands for Local Administered Projects. So it's put on by GDOT, and it gives the authority to the city to manage the activities for federally funded projects. And so, basically, tonight, what I'm asking is that, uh, I get the okay from you guys to work with the county on those applications, um, because obviously, we don't want to have them work on something on their time that we don't want to go through with. Now, um, I do want to kind of go over the funding and the cost of these projects that we're looking at, and the two that we're hopefully going to go forward with, so that you kind of understand where we are on money-wise. So, the city has to put up a twenty percent match for these projects, and I've talked to Mr. Peppers and Mr. Patton about, um, we're gonna, if we want to move forward, we're gonna change the CIE to include Highway one forty so that we can utilize. Um, we can only utilize thirty-four point two percent of the cost to the city for the project. So, um, the two projects are the, uh, intersection of Highway one forty with Riverstone Parkway, that's the concept plan area one, um, and it would cost three point six million, uh, conceptually, and the city would be responsible for seven hundred and twenty-six thousand dollars of that. And then.
Give that again, the money, please.
I'm sorry.
How much money?
Seven hundred and twenty-six thousand.
Thank you.
And then, um, on the concept area three, that's the intersection with Reinhardt College Parkway, where they were going to put in the Florida T. It costs two point three million, and our cost would be four hundred and sixty-five thousand dollars. If we go through with the CIE update for the impact fees, then we would have approximately four hundred thousand dollars from impact fees, and then eight hundred, a different funding source. And so, like I said, I'm not asking for approval on the funding tonight, but I, I do want to kind of find out how we're feeling about it, so that I can go ahead and move forward with the county to work on the applications, because the applications are due, um, in early October, so I will be coming forward with a resolution probably next, um, council meeting to ask for that funding.
So this is, uh, this is an application not to the DOT, right? But to be placed on the transportation improvement plan, through the ARC?
Yes, correct.
With the county.
So we would be, so in that, in that instance, we would be receiving federal transportation dollars through the ARC, as opposed to receiving state transportation dollars through GDOT. Does that make sense?
And these, these are two straight state routes, right? Both of them?
Correct.
And so in lots of cases, the state has utilized those federal dollars in the metro area to offset what they don't have financially to pay for their system.
And based on that application, what, what, what do you think would be the, uh, uh, timeframe on no, knowing when it would be funded?
So we will know the quarter of twenty, second quarter of 2020, on whether or not we receive the funding.
And then, when would you actually receive the funding?
Um, I'm, I'm not exactly sure on the dates of when they would release the monies, I, I would assume we could start pretty much right away with the engineering part of the project.
Okay, Ms. Ashton?
What's the, uh, the term with the service delivery strategy? If you're, is it qualified status? Do you have to be a qualified city at the time you submit it?
So, so if you are a qualified local government when you submit.
So, yes.
You're fine.
Okay, good.
We are under an extension through Oc, October thirty-first. So, we and, both the city and the county are in the same boat with that. They want to get the application in early in October. I believe they've got a couple of other projects that they're planning to submit in TIP as well.
I, I'm, I'm not one hundred percent sure, but I, I would assume so. So.
But for, you know, just from a, just from a process standpoint, if we don't move forward with TIP, we're going to be waiting on state appropriations to GDOT to get the project done. If we do move forward with TIP, we're going to be, you know, rolling the dice that it's a good enough project that the ARC appreciates, that we can get federal funding to get it done. We're more likely to get it done faster with the federal money than we are the state money.
Yeah, I, I agree.
And ultimately, a twenty percent match for those two improvements is a pretty good deal for the city.
Yeah.
Yeah, it is. I mean, it, it, it would be nice if the state would just do it because it's their responsibility.
If they could drive those roads, they would see what a good projects they both are.
How long does it take to put, put an application like that together?
Well, we have to have it done by October, I want to say the eleventh or twelfth.
So there's nothing to lose by making the application regardless.
No, no, there's not, I just, um.
And where we're at, we're in a good position, because we've already had a study done.
Yes.
We've already been meeting with GDOT about our plans, we've already got preliminary engineering done, so.
Yes, and GDOT is on board with these projects as well, and, and the county is, I, I gave you guys an email from Jeff Morton with the county, he needs, he wanted. He needs, he wanted a okay from the city to move forward. And we felt like we needed to ask you guys before we told him, yes, we wanted to move forward.
Is this something we need to do tonight?
Um, I just, I don't necessarily, I guess, I don't know that it needs to be a vote, but just an okay to.
We'll bring a formal resolution to you for the next meeting. Now, what I, what I would mention, that Bethany mentioned, is that part of the reason why we can't do this directly is that we're not LAP certified. And one of the things we are currently working on is to get that certification, which will help us not only on this project, but other federal funding projects in the future. Without having to go through another entity to do those projects.
Correct. And I, and I will be bringing a resolution in two weeks for.
Okay. Okay. Sounds good. Anybody else have a question? Thank you.
Okay, thank you very much.
Discussion of a resolution to accept Iris Park subdivision phase two streets for city maintenance? Talked about that over the past, I think, anyway, and that is, or is this a new, is this a new subdivision? This is the new section?
It's that new section. It's just that short little street and cul-de-sac that they put in in the last couple of years.
They meet all specifications, all requirements?
Yes, sir.
Have streetlights?
Yeah, do they have streetlights? Good question.
I think that's the section that only had.
What was that?
Section that only had the streetlights, right?
They did.
The newer part?
They have streetlights.
Yes.
Sorry, that's.
Okay, that should be an easy one next time.
And I would just note too, that Iris Park is one of the Iris Park, Norton Lake, Park Village. And then there's certain roads and a couple of other neighborhoods are our planned paving projects for the next budget year.
Anything else on there? All right, thank you.
Thank you.
All right, that next item, discussion of alcohol pouring license for Rock and Roll Sushi located at 1548 Riverstone Parkway. Outlet manager, proposed outlet managers Eric W. Robinson and Mr. Patton.
Yes, sir, Mr. Mayor. This is a new business location. It is a new restaurant. It is a first-time pouring license for this. That specific location is the old Verizon Wireless store out in front of the Walmart site.
Any questions on that? I don't think if they meet the regs, they meet the regs.
It's a chain sushi restaurant, so you can find and look at their menu. It seems pretty nice.
Little DoorDash?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, next item, discussion of the Mill on Etowah Master Sign Plan Phase One, Addendum One. So we just had approved one, didn't we? And now they already changed it, right?
Yes. Um, so this is an addendum to the Master Signage Plan Phase One for the Mill on Etowah. The Master Signage Plan Phase One was approved by City Council on July 25th. This addendum is requesting to add a seventh sign type to the six previously approved allowable sign types for Building A, C, and D. The addendum is also requesting that the applicant may have one of the sign type five per tenant elevation that will vary per tenant location. And it may be internally lighted with LED instead of having one sign of the sign type five per elevation, per tenant elevation. The addendum also calls out specific sign types for specific locations as well as future or potential locations for the development. The total square footage of sign proposed for Building A is 1,600 square feet. If you include the graphic mural area of the total proposed, it will be 2,365 square feet. If you combine the two, it'll be a total of 3,432 square feet for Building A. Total square footage of signage proposed for Building C is only 105 square feet. There is no graphic or mural that will be added to that building. Total square footage of sign proposed for Building D is only 87 square feet. There is no graphic or mural added to that building. Total combined signage with graphic and mural requested for Phase One Addendum Building A, C, and D is a total of 3,653 square feet. The, um, this item was heard by the Historic Preservation Commission on June 3rd. They recommended approval of their Master Signage Plan Phase One Addendum with conditions. The conditions that they suggested Mayor and City Council consider include limiting each tenant to a maximum of 75 square feet of signage. The wording and in accordance with the sign regulations of the City Unified Development Code and Canton Historic District Guidelines. Be added to the statement B1 on page 0.4. And complying with the Historic District Guidelines by limiting plastic, vinyl, and/or acrylic signs out of the Master Signage Plans.
Everybody got all that?
And if you look through the plan that they gave, all of the highlighted in the bubble area is what they're proposing. So I just did a summary of those items.
I've had a real long time to look through this, but how much are they trying to increase the size?
I'm sorry?
Are they trying to increase the size? Is that what they're doing? And how, by how much? What percentage? Again?
With this Master Sign Plan and their proposal, if you go by the sign regulations for commercial buildings. Just Building A, the maximum square footage for wall sign would be approximately 1,580 square feet. And they're asking for about 2,400 square feet just with Building A. So it's a sizable increase off of what our normal sign regulations throughout the rest of the city is requesting. I would add that the language about the plastic that was included in the HPC recommendation. Staff had discussions with the Historic Preservation Commission. A question was asked of staff if plastic was allowed. We got that answer back to them that the design guidelines do not allow plastic. Staff has done a research project that will be presenting information to the Historic Preservation Commission next week. In which 72% of signs within the historic district have been approved for some type of plastic or acrylic. Eight of those went through HPC approval and HPC approved plastic or acrylic. That is one of the items. There's a committee of staff members that are looking at amendments to bring to City Council for sign regulations in total. Not just Master Sign Plan, but all the sign ordinance regulations, including language that's in the community overlay standards in regards to signage. But we did want to point out to you that they have asked City Council to consider upholding those guidelines. But we're not doing our job. We don't let you know that they've already approved some. And we are looking into that to bring something forward to council.
Did they also say something about backlight LED signs?
Yes.
And isn't that what we didn't want before? Or is that what we actually approved over here?
Well, City, City Council did approve an amendment to sign regulations, which does allow for digital and electronic messaging. City Council with the Academy and Main Master Sign Plan did approve some internally illuminated signs. Panera Bread has a couple of internally illuminated signs that was a part of that Academy and Main Master Sign Plan approval.
Thank you.
Anyone else have a question there? What do y'all recommend? Any questions? Now, will this come up in our next meeting?
Yes, for action in two weeks.
Some, somehow it seems to me that, I don't know how we got where you can do anything you want to as long as we say it's okay in a planned unit development. But yet we have sign regs that say you can only be this big and, you know, and so many on this building if it's on a corner or whatever. Somehow or another, the regs don't mean much to me if you can say, okay, let's just put this pot over here and go crazy with these signs. And then over here, there's a business over here, a single business. Oh, no, you can't do that. You can't have, but just so much square footage on there. But over here, we say, okay, you can do whatever you want to do, as long as the council says okay.
Part of, part of that rolls back to the whole idea that you can still have a master sign plan. And so, you know, if that's a concern of council, we would just need to remove that ability.
I'm not, I'm not advocating that right now because I don't, I'm not really sure I understand some of the reasoning, past reasoning yet well enough. But it just, it just seems to me to be inherently unfair to a certain extent.
And I understand that sentiment, Mr. Mayor. We've had this discussion with other master sign plans that have come before City Council and that sort of thing. But the language that does allow for the master sign plan to be submitted for those properties that is on planned development. Actually even predates me coming to work with the city. That was in the old ordinances that were adopted by City Council in 1998. That has just been carried forward ever since then. But there is a committee of staff members that are working on an overall amendment to bring to City Council in regards to signage and things of that nature.
Oh, good. But we won't have it in two weeks.
Hopefully, we'll, we'll address all of this and everything's going to be clear and simple and across the board.
Well, that'll, that'll be enlightening, I got to tell you, to do that. Hope it's clear and simple. Anybody else have a question on that? Thank you. Okay, the next item is discussion of the JUST FOIA program for open records requests. Our city clerk, are you doing that? Yes, are you, yeah, people can hear. Go ahead.
This program solution is called JUST FOIA, Freedom of Information Act. It will allow the city and in particular itself to manage and fulfill open records requests more efficiently. Currently, the system is email-based, which it will send me an email just in my regular inbox. And in order to keep track of it, it's a lot of checking in with city staff. It's a lot of follow-up on my end, a lot of actual printing to keep track of these emails. So this program solely focuses on open records requests. It will allow myself to look and see if a city staff has responded, if we're still waiting on them. It will notify the city staff member that they have something pending or passed due. It also allows the applicant to check in online to see the status of their requests and us to email them directly. I have spoken with IT and it does parallel with all of the systems that we already have. And there are several local jurisdictions, I believe Woodstock, Acworth, all use this program. And when I spoke with them, they all had favorable things to say.
And what does this cost?
The implementation is, I believe it's 6,000. And yearly, it would be under 3,500 a year. But implementation is, I'm sorry, it's 5265, $5,265.
How many records requests do you get in a day or a week, whatever is more appropriate, a lot?
I'd say some weeks I may get five, some weeks I may get 15. This program also, if I get multiple requests for the same thing, which does happen a lot. It will allow me to make that certain request public so someone could just search it without having actually formally requesting that document.
So, so one thing that, that people forget, you know, we have to provide feedback to an open records request in a certain amount of time. Regardless if Ms. Fortner's working, or if she's off sick, or if somebody else has got the request. We get lots of requests, for instance, at PD for accident reports. We get lots of requests from insurance companies, has there ever been a fire at this location? We get lots of requests for building permit information. We get lots of requests from companies who want to do business with the city that want large amounts of information. To be able to tailor a proposal to us down the road. And it takes a lot of time. And so the ability to quickly go in and search for emails on certain things or be able to track where we are in a request. We don't have to provide the information back within three days. We just have to let them know that we've received their requests and what it might look like. And so it makes sure that we stay in compliance with those. And hopefully, it makes the job of the clerk a lot easier.
You can, you can handle verbal requests that way too, right?
That's correct.
I mean, then they would just put it in whenever.
And one of the things we've tried to push people to do, instead of calling us on the phone and verbally requesting something. Go to our website now and fill out the form. Because the more information you put down, the easier it is for us to determine what exactly it is you're asking for. And how quickly we can get it to you. In a lot of cases, we'll reach back out to somebody and will say, your request is so broad, you know, what is it you're looking for? We may be able to get it much faster if we can, if we can narrow your search down.
Exactly. I had a request like that recently, which found over 5,000 emails. And of course, I have to go through each and every document before we release it in case anything needs to be redacted. So I've reached out to that applicant to see if we could narrow it down and to shorten the amount of work and cost to them. Because I'll have to charge them for my time.
And the PD would use it too.
Absolutely.
All departments.
What it really does for us is it makes it clear that open records requests go through the city clerk. The clerk can then assign those to various departments. Right now, if an open records request comes into PD, they handle their own request.
And I may never know it.
Ms. McGrew?
Is there any reimbursement from the person requesting information? Is there a charge for that information?
Hands. For open records requests?
Yeah, we charge for an open records request if it's, if they were wanting physical copies. We have 10 cents a page. If they're larger documents, we generally have to send them over to Green's Blueprinting in which they'll pay that business their fee. If it's something that we can fulfill within 15 minutes, we don't charge an hourly rate.
So you do charge for your time? Because apparently sometimes it's time-consuming.
We have to, we charge the rate of time for the lowest paid person who can fulfill the request. And, you know, sometimes the lowest paid person is the department head or the CFO or the police chief. I mean, it just depends on what.
And it can be very costly.
Okay, thank you.
Anyone else? Sounds like something that'd help your efficiency quite a bit. Okay, next item. Jack, tell us about scooter rentals.
I know a lot about scooters because I owned a business. I sell scooters and motorcycles. I've been riding them since I was 15 years old. But I had two geniuses the other day who got caught robbing a bank and, and tried to get, make their getaway on scooters. I hope we don't have that here in Canton. Every, every time I go to Atlanta, I see this. They got them all over the side of the sidewalks, all on the bridges, everywhere, gas stations. They're just laying everywhere. I think it's something we do not want. I think it's very dangerous. Most people think, oh, you can get on a scooter and do anything, even if you've never ridden one. Wrong. It's a good way to get hurt and have a lot of accidents. So I just hope we nip this one in the bud and don't, don't let them have it, you know. I hope we vote no for that.
Okay. Anyone else?
Couple of items. First, if you'll recall, recently, we had a conditional use permit at Pod 18 in Great Sky. And that's where we provided a conditional use permit for town homes within that section. The developer has come back and said, we're not going to do town homes. We're going to do duplexes. And so, if you'll recall, they could do single family attached within that pod by right under the master plan. The conditional use permit came into effect because they were looking to do multiple units connected, three or more, which makes it multifamily. So the question to staff was, you know, or I guess it didn't even come as a question. They said, we don't have to use any of the conditions that were placed on the conditional use permit because we're not using the conditional use permit. We're building what we could build by right. So I wanted to let you know that that's likely what they will do. They will build the duplex instead of the town homes that were approved in conditional use permit, which means those conditions on screening, conditions on road locations, plantings and things like that will not be applicable to the project. So I think it's important that you know that because you may get questions from the residents saying, I thought you approved this. Well, you approved a conditional use permit for town homes and that's not what they're building. So I wanted to let you know that.
I'm sorry.
Mr. Dyer may have some ideas on that, too, but that's just, we've kind of talked about it from different routes as to how it, how it works. Mr. Patton and I have talked about it. Mr. Dyer and I have talked about it, you know, and ultimately, if they're building something that they could have built without the conditional use permit, they could still do it without those conditions.
Of course, the difference in the number of residential units.
So a conditional use permit is only required for multifamily development. Multifamily development is where you have three or more connected units. So if you recall, the plans that they submitted showed town homes with five here, six here, three here, what have you. That's why they had to apply for a conditional use permit. They've now decided they don't want to build that. They want to build duplex units. It'll still be, it'll still be, you know, fee simple, single family attached, but in duplex segments. That doesn't meet our definition for multifamily because it's less than three units. And if it doesn't meet the definition for multifamily, it's not required to get a conditional use permit.
Was this not a site plan amendment in addition to the permission?
No, it was just a conditional.
It was not, well, it was not a master plan. It would be, it would have had to have been a master plan amendment. It was not. It was a conditional use permit. They only came to us because of our rule that says you have to get a conditional use permit for multifamily. So they weren't asking for the master plan to be amended or rezone the property. They were asking, can we build multifamily? You said you can build multifamily with these conditions.
There's going to be a few unhappy folks with the, they're going to clear, they're going to clear that site and there's going to be no fencing. There's going to be no trees necessarily, or at least buffers, and they can do whatever they want to.
They could have done that without coming to you at all. You were asking about the number of units.
Yeah.
I think you meant total, I thought.
Right, I do.
It will be less.
Less, less residential units than we had approved with.
Correct.
Okay, that was my.
I don't know how many less, but I was told it was.
But it will be less.
So we have the planning and zoning of, what, 2,000, I think, for this, basically? Because this was established back, way back when the master plan was established.
That's correct.
Right.
Okay.
Well, and so you could have rezoned property at any time. I mean, nobody came and asked you to, but you could have, if you want to review master plans for this kind of thing, when we did it before, we just decided to make it a conditional use for apartments. But you can pick up any master plan anytime you want and change the conditions.
And so, one comment, you know, back to the landscape, they'll still have to meet certain landscape requirements that were in the initial master plan. And they'll still have to meet tree recompense as it relates to things that they cut down with a tree survey and all that. They just won't be doing what you conditioned them to do for multifamily. May not be to the same level. The second thing I wanted to let you know about, we received, I believe it was Tuesday this week, a copy of an inmate housing agreement from the sheriff. So as you may be aware, if the municipality arrests someone and we have to house them, we put them in the county jail. And basically, the way the agreement is written is we will continue to pay 10% of our fines that we collect on our municipal court cases to the jail fund, which is provided for in state law. We have to do that. They are now going to impose a $35 per day, per inmate fee for municipal inmates. Now, the problem in the past has been they couldn't tell us who was a municipal inmate and who was not. If we arrest someone who's in there on a state court issue, they don't, they don't continue to be a municipal inmate at that point. They become an inmate of the county. And so, they're working on that process, but we will be, when we agree to this, if we agree to this, we will be sending them a check on a monthly basis for inmate costs.
If they arrest, if the sheriff's department arrests someone in the city, is that a city?
They can't arrest, they couldn't arrest somebody on a municipal charge in the city limits.
So what we want, what we want the agreement to say, and it's never said this before, is that we should pay for anybody that's in there only because of a city charge. So what you, so anybody that's arrested for burglary in the city of Canton, they're not in there because of a city charge. There may be people that we've arrested for DUI who, once they're in jail, they find out they have warrants from Henry County. They're in the jail because of the Henry County warrant, not because of our DUI.
So it doesn't matter if our police even arrest them here and they go to jail, then they're on a, that's not a city charge.
Correct. We shouldn't pay for anything that's going to be tried in spirit court because other than state law violations, we just happen to be the arresting officer. They track it now by who arrested. And that's what we need to clarify. We don't have very many people in jail.
So, exactly. So when this first came up, when Sheriff Reynolds, I think, went in office, you know, they would send us a report daily saying, we've got 595 people in the county jail. And of those, we believe, you know, the city of Canton has 40 inmates in the county jail. When they dug down to it, I think we had two that were actually on city charges. And so, there will be some cost associated with it. What, what we received on Tuesday was an agreement that's signed by the sheriff. It's not signed by the county and it's not signed by the city. We haven't adopted it. I reached back out to the sheriff because his agreement says October 1st. I said, hold on a second. This will have to go into the October agenda cycle because we'll have to put it on the work session. We may want to propose some changes. We may need to look at it and all that. So he understands that. He understands that this may not be something that's approved as quickly as.
So now we're only giving them a certain percentage of fines?
So the current.
Well, 10%, it's a jail fund. And that's another problem I have is we don't get a credit for that.
Well, so they're going, they're going to get both, right?
The old agreement, the old agreement had us paying both, but the county never invoiced us for inmate charges because they didn't have a way to clearly get that information. It also gave us a credit, which basically said, whatever we provide in fines, they will match that up to our invoices. And, you know, if our fines cover what our inmate costs are, then we won't pay anything. This agreement doesn't have that credit anymore. It goes away.
Okay. Anyone else?
I would also mention on that, the old agreement was an agreement that was signed by all of the cities, the county and the sheriff. The new agreement proposed is just between the individual city, the county and the sheriff. So we're not party to the other city's agreements. Just something to ponder.
Since that's not part of the service delivery, right?
According to the state, apparently. Also, I wanted to let you know, we, we had our town hall meeting in August and I'll say it was a smashing success. I think we had 80 people there or more. It was a packed room. It was hot because the air wasn't working. But I did want to let you know, all the documents from the town hall meeting are on our website. If you go to the Your Government tab and click on City Council, it'll populate out of that list. And then the last thing I wanted to make you aware of, tomorrow at noon, we will be having a ceremony where we will install Deputy Chief Mayor Field as our interim chief. And I hope that you will take the opportunity to join us at the courtroom while we do that. We're very excited. I think he's going to bring a lot of great enthusiasm to this role and give us an opportunity to think about policing moving forward in the city. That's all I have unless you have any questions for me.
Anyone?
I don't have a question for Billy, but for Ken, real quick, clarification. I was informed from many of the residents in River Green that the planning and zoning meeting will be no longer the week, I think the 16th. It is now scheduled for the 24th?
It was scheduled for the 19th.
19th, okay.
We had to move it to the 24th because of a problem with legal advertisement. State zoning procedures specifies that legal advertisements run in general circulation newspaper, not less than 15, not more than 45 days. They changed a deadline date and did not inform us. We've normally been sending our ads to them on Tuesday mornings before noon. They had a new deadline of end of day on Monday, 5:00 PM. So the advertisement did not run to meet the June 19th date. We are bearing the expense to carry forward all of those items with all of the associated new legal cost, notification of adjacent property owners, things of that nature, so that these items can move forward on the 24th and come to city council in October.
So the concern is that many of those residents would, had wanted to attend the meeting and it happens to be the fall break for Cherokee County. And so, that's the concern that it now falls during.
As we tell anybody that asks if they have concerns, they can certainly put those concerns in written form and submit them to our office. And we make sure that city council, as well as planning commission members, get any emails, any written letters in regards to that. We had to have the meeting then because of another language requirement in the Unified Development Code. There were a couple of those matters that had already been tabled twice. And there's language that that's the maximum could be tabled. We had no option other than 24th.
Okay.
And there'll be another public hearing in front of the city council.
Okay. No, thank you.
Anyone else? Mr. McGee?
Mr. Peppers, I wanted to thank you and your staff profusely for all of the work that you all did for that town hall. I've gotten lots of positive comments. People were very appreciative of the information. And I know staff, it was a lot of extra work and we really, really do appreciate it.
Thank you. I know staff really enjoyed it. Anytime we get a chance to sit down and talk with the public, we enjoy it.
Thank you. It meant a lot.
And thank you from me, too. Okay, I think that's finally wrapping it. You have something?
I have one quick comment. I had, you don't even have to stay out there for it. I had mentioned to Mr. Peppers that I thought it was probably based on posts I've been seeing on Facebook and talking to people to start thinking about and start discussions about golf carts or carts on our streets. It's something we, it's been mentioned several times over the years. And I think it's probably time to start doing, you know, looking at some kind of regulation for it. So I've asked if the staff could start pulling together, you know, sample ordinances. And I just wanted to mention it here for everybody to be thinking about and get your, you know, your input from your constituents. And I just wanted to put that out there.
And I apologize. You did mention that to me. Just neglected to put it on the agenda.
No, that's perfectly fine. I wasn't prepared to discuss it tonight anyway.
We'll do some research between now and the next meeting.
Okay.
I have two, two council introduce things. They're quick, don't they? The first one was that this morning, the Cherokee County Chamber of Commerce recognized us and sent us a certificate of appreciation because in the mayor's recycling challenge, the city of Canton collected 321,030 pounds of recyclable materials. So.
Saw your picture.
Oh, you did?
Good. Yeah, have you seen it?
No, I haven't seen it. But anyway, I'm going to give it to the city clerk. The other one is, Mayor, I want to give a shout out to you. I attended on behalf of one of our constituents, a meeting at the Housing Authority last month. And your appointment of Nathan Brandon as chairman of the board of the Housing Authority has really made a difference. Marzine Hudson has been hired as the executive director. And if you will go visit those housing projects that are, the one on Oakdale, one on Jefferson Circle, you will see a tremendous difference from what you saw this time last year. So to you, to Nathan, to Marzine, a big shout out for what's going on. I understand from the meeting I attended that they have a complete capacity. They are full and have waiting lists. So, but, but they have really upgraded the system. And so, thank you for what you did to get that work done.
Well, that Housing Authority, as you know, I mean, the only way you could go was up.
Well, it's.
Didn't have to do too much to make it look better. But we do have a new board that's been on there about, about a year, I guess, hasn't it now? Pretty close?
I think it's their second year.
Maybe it's the second year. But anyway, they, some new, new members in there, totally replaced board members. And that's really the only authority we have as far as the Housing Authority goes. Don't have any operational authority, but we've got a good board in there now and they're, they're doing what a Housing Authority is supposed to be doing. And they're looking at, you know, additional housing and so forth. The other, it just, what was there was there for years, you know?
It was.
So they're doing a good job and, you know, we appreciate what they're doing. And Nathan Brandon is a good man.
Your selection of Nathan and those board members has made the progress.
They're taking the job seriously.
I fully.
I had actually requested to come next month and give a report.
Good.
To council. I think I had let y'all know that.
I think they'd be happy to do that.
Yeah. Okay. All right. Any, if there's not anything else, I entertain a motion to adjourn.
Motion.
Second. Mr. McGee made the motion. Ms. Wilson seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. We're gone.